Are present in chambers. I need a motion to approve the business agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the business agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the business agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, although I guess I would note just for the record, we did move the 1115 item, the discussion regarding the governor's healthy Washington roadmap to recovery from the morning to this afternoon session likely around 2:35-ish to. And so I guess I would note that that was the the chair's discretion to move that item into the afternoon when the the health officer or the health director is available. So without any other discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the commissioner meeting minutes for January 5th, 2021 as presented.
I will second that.
You have a motion and a second on the January 5th, 2021 minutes. Any discussion?
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes.
I would like to, for the record, state that I very much appreciate the quick turnaround on the meeting minutes that's happening as of late. I just want to thank everybody for that.
Okay, that's good. Yes, we're trying to start the new year in a new expedient way. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed the minutes. That brings us to citizen comment. This is will be limited to seven minutes per individual. If you want to make comment, these will be for items that are not on the board's agenda. Later, if I'm gonna open it up, if you wanna raise your hand, we can't see folks, or unmute yourself, I'm looking for the raised hand. This is citizen comment, yeah, if my seatmates can help, again, the clerk.
People that are not on Zoom would just have to unmute.
Unmute themselves.
I would like to speak.
Right now, if you do, then say your name and where you live for the record, and then you can address the board for seven minutes.
Greg Wagner, I believe, is unmuted.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, did you have public comment today, sir?
Yes, sir, my name's Greg Wagner, live at 303 Fish Hatchery Road. I'm a member of C, Citizens Organized about solar energy. Today, my comment is our group CESE was formed by concerned citizens of the county due to the encroaching industrial scale solar farms. Our mission is to educate everyone about all the issues of solar. With that knowledge, the citizens and you can make an educated decision. Any decision regarding the future of industrial scales or scale solar farms in our county should be made with the input of all concerned citizens. CESE is not totally opposed to solar when done responsibly, with all the concerns fully addressed and resolved. CESE is not your adversary. We want to work with you to keep our county a great place to live. This is not a meat issue, it is a weed issue. We have brought to your attention and the citizens many of the problems associated with industrial scale solar farms. In our canvassing of the entire county, we have found very little support for it. As you have been made aware of, the current ordinance was written for, not written for solar and for wind, and need to be rewritten and adopted to provide protection for our citizens and the county. We've asked for a moratorium, and you stated you need more time to study the issues. The whole purpose of a moratorium is to delay an action. That delay in the form of the moratorium will give you time to complete your studies. It will also prevent any future industrial scale solar project from being permitted in our county. A moratorium does not cost anything and will not hurt anyone. It is in the best interest of all the citizens and the county. White Salmon recently enacted a moratorium on residential development until their leaders learn more and can make the right decisions. So why aren't we? Let's trade places. The solar farms are going to surround your home, and I'm your commissioner. What would you want me to do for you? Let's do what's needed so our county remains what it is today, a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anybody else for citizen comment?
I would like to speak, commissioners.
Please give your name and where you live, please.
Roseville Dimick, 55 Tucker Hill Road, and I too am a member of CESE. And we reached out to you about some several questions and which you'd answered. And you had us, you wanted us to ask our own fire department these questions. And the questions were whether or not they had been receiving any special training to fight structural fires or solar panel fires. And when we did reach out to them, Dave Telford, District 7, said that he had not received any specific training for these type of fires. And so I went and researched the Lund Hill Final Environmental Impact Statement. And I also read in there that it says that it states that our wildland districts don't have equipment to fight structural fires. So my question to you, commissioners, are how are how are fire departments going to address any fires that are gonna happen at these at these locations? Especially given the fact that they are notorious for starting wildfires? And again, we just ask that you, you know, also read these documents that have been published by by this county and ask yourself whether or not they are sufficient in covering these solar farms from coming into our county. And by doing so, you can place that moratorium to buy yourself some more time to address these important issues that compromise our county's safety. Thank you.
You, Ms. Dimick, this is Commissioner Christopher. And as a volunteer firefighter in Centerville, we do not have training to fight a solar panel fire, but we would do what we could do with what we had at the time to handle what we could handle.
This is Jake Anderson, District 1 Commissioner. Ms. Dimick, did you say that the wildland fire districts do not have the ability to fight structural fires?
That's what it states in the Lund Hill File Environmental Impact Statement.
Okay, I thought that's what you might have heard from your speaking with the fire district.
That is correct, because we we were told by your offices that in order for us to get those answers regarding the safety of our our fire department, you had us, you had mentioned or recommended that we reach out to our to our districts and ask those questions, and we did so yesterday and talked to Dave Telford. And and as you also just reiterated, that you have not received any specific training.
And Lee, when are we doing our our tour?
The tour, you're gonna put me on the spot.
Yeah, stop looking at my.
Twenty-four.
It's the 25th of February.
February. 25th of February. Thank you very much, Mrs. Dimick. I I'm trying to write down all of your questions, they're the same questions I have. And when we do our tour on the 25th, these are the questions I plan on asking the other governments where we're going to visit.
Well, Commissioner, I I wanna I wanna kind of point out that the Lund Hill project has been finalized and approved. So these are these are concerns that residents out here in the night area are very concerned about, because it's almost like we have a magic eight ball of the future, and it's called Lund Hill. So residents now are looking to projects that have already been approved and comparing them to what might be our future. And that's the most concerning part, is that you're just now on the board of going and visiting other locations, which are much smaller than the ones that are projected to be in this area. And you're asking the you're asking the people who are actually with the companies for their their input. And we want you to perhaps go on the opposition and see see the other side. So again, so the foxes aren't in charge of the hen house.
Ms. Dimick, that's that's why I made the statement. This is why I'm gonna be asking the jurisdictions when we go on this tour. I'm not asking the the solar panel companies.
Okay. Well, there's many counties across the nation who are updating their their ordinances. And we, you know, urge you to perhaps look at Clickatah County. They have just recently updated theirs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're still in citizen comment, are there others? Oh, I have a hand raised.
Elaine Harvey.
Yes, Elaine Harvey, if you wanna unmute yourself and say, well, we know you're Elaine Harvey, but you're place of residence as well.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Elaine Harvey and I live at 435 Hill Road, and I'm also a member of the CESE group. And my concern is and is about the the energy overlay zone. And I listened to you guys' meeting last week, your comments in regards to the energy overlay zone. And you guys stated that it doesn't need to be updated right now, but it does, because you guys are people, BPA, the solar companies, landowners, who else, has been planning this night solar project for the past three to four years. So I'm pretty sure there's other solar projects planned for the county. And this energy overlays on needs to include solar impacts to the environment, residents. And it needs to be done. It and in the Lund Hill solar project, it kind of slid through the slid through without anything in regards to environmental impacts that they have to Pine Creek and to Wood Creek and to the loss of the Shubstep habitat in the wildlife, the deer wintering habitat. So the E O Z needs to include solar panel impacts to the environment and to residents, because as we already know, there's one property in Lund Hill that's totally surrounded and enclosed by this big solar project. So that's my comment. And also, I'm not even sure if the John Day Water Pump Storage Project, you know, are they included in the E O Z? And what's is the E O Z, you know, did it, does it include the water pump storage? So these are big issues that need to be taken care of. And and I don't think they're taking, you know, it's not taken seriously with in consideration of these big energy projects that everybody's calling green. How can a green energy project be green if it's causing so much environmental damage? So that's my comment today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harvey.
You have a Sheri, and I'm gonna kill her last name, it's B O U S Q U E T.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Sheri Baske. I live 120 Houston Street in Houston. And I would like to kind of piggyback on the SEPA comments. And in the project you also have coming up, I'm not sure if I can speak of it, if you haven't reviewed it yet, it's in review. But it too has a mitigation, a determination of non-significance has already been placed on it by county planning. And as the citizens review the SEPA checklist, the environmental checklist, it's quite apparent to lay citizens who it's not even our job to know these environmental impacts, but we can see inconsistencies, skewed numbers, and a lot of SEPA things that should be addressed in this application blatantly not addressed. And this project that's proposed in Houston would have quite an impact on our environment. And again, as I say, just a normal citizen can review the SEPA evaluation, environmental checklist, and see that it's missing quite a lot of important.
Ma'am, I'm I'm gonna have to stop you. This is, I'm a I'm assuming the project in Houston you're speaking of, so you didn't you didn't mention it by name, is the under canvas project. That SEPA is, you know, it's open for public comment right now, which you're you can direct those comments to the to the official. But that if there is an appeal of that SEPA, it would come to this board. And so you you cannot really comment as to the efficacy of that SEPA or anything to the board at this time. If there is an appeal, then you will be able to raise those issues with the board. Otherwise, it's gonna be hard for us not to recuse ourselves. We are gonna be acting in a capacity as, you know, basically the judge at that point. And we're not having the hearing yet. But I would suggest that is the open comment period right now. If there are issues in that SEPA or any SEPA, generally during that commentary, this is your opportunity right now to submit those concerns that you have to the to the SEPA official right now. And that that can get entered into that record right now.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. So if I can make it a broad statement on any upcoming project that the county puts an M D N S on.
Yes.
If, you know, when the county is looking at SEPA applications, if they could be more stringent and really evaluating them and making sure that they have all full protocols, that if that, I think, is a part that the county can really step up on. And I'm sure as citizens who end up having to do our own work to combat SEPA that aren't quite done or whatever. And then also, we reach into taxpayers, reach into our own pocket to then do appeals, fight these SEPA. So in the future, I'm asking that the county evaluate these SEPA environmental checklists more stringently and side on the citizens. And really, at the end of the day, are they completely, are they good before issuing a non-significance to them? That would be my general comment to the county, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen. Go ahead, try again, sir.
I was gonna speak back.
Oh, is that feedback?
We do have two phones that are unmuted.
Anyone else wanting to give? Speak to the board, public testimony, or actually, citizen comment.
This is Lenward with Building Inspection and Compliance.
All right, go ahead, Lynn.
I just have a very quick update for you before next week when we have public hearing. I received word this morning that the adoption date has been further postponed to July 1st of this year for the 2018 codes.
Okay.
But we've already scheduled public hearing, so unless you want me to do otherwise, we can still continue, and we've just revised our packet to indicate that July 1st date.
Right, what's the wishes of the board?
I'd stay on schedule, it'd be my guess.
Yeah, I would support that.
Why did they push it back, Lynn, do you know?
I don't know, I just know that the State Building Code Council voted on the 8th to postpone it till July 1st. That's the only verbiage we were given.
Yeah, I mean, I would I I would say, you know, we've already advertised, let's go forward. We'll just, you know, we can just amend our thing as far as the implementation date, so it aligns with whatever date the state ever ends up. I think it's interesting that we're talking, it's 21, and we're talking about implementing the 18 code.
Exactly, so what I what I am gonna propose next Tuesday is that we say July 1st or the date decided upon by the State Building Code Council.
Okay, let's say full steam ahead or half steam or whatever that is.
All right. Just didn't want to take you by surprise.
Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, we've still got almost 10 minutes of citizen comment, generally.
I I would like to make one more comment, please.
Yes, please state your name for the.
Roseville Dimick, 55 Tucker Hill Road. It was also brought to my attention that from Mo Chee Lin, that the appeal process or the appeal permit or application, it costs $4,000 to appeal a Class C project, is that correct?
I'm I'm gonna speculate, but I think the appeal process, the the fee to do it, there is a there is a calculation based on the size of the project. And so that that could be accurate. I think that's the maximum appeal.
That was that was really written in the energy overlay, energy overlay projects when it was created. Yeah.
Well, I would I would just like to comment that I think that that fee is excessive, especially for any property owner that wants to appeal these such projects.
This is Commissioner Christopher, and I would agree with you.
And last week, you guys, sorry, last last week, you had mentioned, one of you commissioners, sorry, because I'm only on the phone and I can't see who's talking. But they had mentioned that the planning department was overwhelmed and that the E I Ss might not be updated because of her her impact of how much workload that she has. The county has also appointed her SEPA responsible official and floodplain administrator. And I think that's a huge bearing, a load to carry on one one person in our county. And perhaps if her work could be delegated outside of just one department, too, we could get a better broad, you know, opinion on these projects as well.
All right, we are still in citizen comment?
Mr. Commissioners, this is Greg Wagner, 303 Fish Hatchery. May I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead, I said I'm gonna answer it, but go ahead. It is citizen comment, so.
Well, this question concerns Lund Hill Solar Farm. How is Lund Hill Solar Farm approved if all the environmental impact studies were done for a wind farm? And that's what they used as the guideline to allow a solar farm to be approved?
Mr. Wagner, I do know with Lund Hill Solar Farm, there were multiple meetings between county staff as well as the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And in the end, there was mitigation that was required for that solar farm. And I believe that mitigation goes to the county, and I think there's a certain, I don't know how much money sitting in that fund. But those, there were meetings and discussions that were brought up. And there was, they based the mitigation off the old solar plans and the or the old wind plans, and then had to have multiple discussions after that. But there were multiple meetings that that happened about the the environmental impacts and the including the ground, including the fencing. And there's a there's always this dichotomy between what we would like to be able to see and then what the federal energy rules require in terms of fencing and letting animals through. And we're always stuck in that middle ground. And and there's a lot of instances where we'd like to see things done. I was county staff at the time, but the feds won't allow it to happen.
Well, in reading the final environmental impact study, it appears that most of that has been written for wind farms, because that's what the all the E O Z and everything was written for in the first place with little consideration to solar. And even when you read like Michael Ritter's comments from the W D F W, and you're talking about the size of fencing and all that, it looks like many of those issues went unaddressed. And if you're gonna have a solar farm, they ought to have complete new studies done that relate just to the impact of a solar farm, which is totally different than a wind farm. You you do an avian study on a wind farm, you have whirling propeller blades that knock birds out of the sky, that's totally different than when a solar panel's flat facing straight up, and it looks like an ocean, and the birds fly and think they're gonna land on water, and they hit these solar panels or kill, or they get electrocuted. You know, there's it's totally apples and oranges when it comes to the impact of it. So the study should have been done, which shows direct relationship of the impact that the solar farm's gonna have, not base it on a wind farm study. You know, the E O Z is written so that these corporations can come in. We've done a lot of the studies in advance, and they they get to come right into county. But if you're gonna let a solar farm come in based on wind farm studies, that's inappropriate. It should have probably never been approved without new studies being done. So the concern is what happens to any future growth of solar? Do we just all say it's it's the studies we've had done for wind apply to the solar? And they come in? You know, we already have the problem that the solar farms are exempt from electrical inspection. And the people that will install the equipment don't even have to be trained according to the L N I and the R C W, they all state that. So we don't even get to inspect what goes on in our own county over there on 4,513 acres of ground, not to count whatever will come in the future. These are important issues. We're kind of putting the cart before the horse on many things here instead of doing our due diligence and making sure we got it all covered before we allow it to happen. So that's all I have to say. I believe we need to go in the right direction and and really look at all these things before we allow anything else to occur. That's why we need a moratorium. We can't let one of these companies come in, submit a plan, and get grandfathered under the existing, almost nonexistent ordinance for solar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any other citizen comment?
This is Sheri Baske again, and I would just like to go again with the M D N or the M D N Ss, the mitigated determination of non-significance that are just put on these projects so easily with so many mitigated terms. And that I think as the county moving forward, really should evaluate as the citizens, you taxpayers, you are to protect us first, not the special interest corporations with mitigating things that violate the SEPA environmental checklist. So again, I just wanted to state as a citizen, a taxpayer, that if you could really look at these projects before you just say they have non-significance, that would be great for us as citizens that you work for and not make us spend $4,000 to appeal something you slapped a determination of non-significance on without proper study. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, ma'am, I'm gonna take some, I'm gonna push back a little bit. First off, the the $4,000 appeal fee is specific to these large, it actually isn't an energy, and I don't believe it's actually in the energy overlay zone. It is actually any large scale project is the appeal fee. Appeal fees for a smaller project, it's there's a sliding scale where it gets down where the idea actually of the fee is to cover the cost to provide the appeal as far as for postage and whatnot to mail all the stuff out. So I want to make sure that other folks listening, that the appeal fee for any appeal is not $4,000. As to the the, you know, non-significance, the M D N S is just, it's not saying that there is not, there is nothing of significance. It is a mitigated determination of non-significance, which means there is significant things, but they can be mitigated if you follow all of these conditions. M D N Ss have, you know, depending on the scale and the scope of the project, can have countless requirements in them to make them non-significant. If they, if the project, whatever it is, doesn't follow that, then it can't move forward. And I and I think all of us as taxpayers do not want, or as citizens in this county, I can tell you, I don't want to live somewhere that. you, I don't want to live somewhere that folks can, that the county, or the state, or the feds can impose so many conditions on anything I can do with my property, that I can't do anything with it because of, you know, real or perceived potential, possible impacts from something. Now, can we do a better job? Of course we can. And I think we, but that is our job, is to try to identify through the CEPA process, what are all of the possible things? And then there has to be an answer for every one of those. And if all of those can be answered so that you can get to an MDNS, the project can move forward. I, I support that, whatever the project is. I'm not necessarily talking about solar or any other large-scale project, or any project. You know, otherwise, we could be in circumstances, I mean, there are, there are, there are potential where you have to fill out CEPA's for doing things that you're doing around your house. And pretty soon, we are having CEPA checklist having to be, you know, these really large things just to, to put an addition on your house, or put a new driveway in, or, so it's always, it's kind of a balancing act between that. We try to do that. And obviously, some folks think that we don't, we're, we don't do a good job of balancing out impacts over, you know, private property rights. So I'm gonna leave it, actually, I have, I'm gonna go with Mr. Christopher.
I, I just, this Commissioner Christopher, I just had a quick statement that, that what Mr. Commissioner Soder just said, 100% totally agree with every word he said. The, the process will work out. Just gotta trust the process to some degree, which I know is hard, but we'll get there.
This is Commissioner Anderson. One thing people have to understand about the process is, is an MDNS means that there will be mitigated measures. Even if you go to the next step, which is an EIS, and we're currently in the midst of multiple EISs in this county, an EIS can usually cost upwards of a million dollars.
Right.
I don't think if you want to put an addition on your house, you want to spend a million dollars on the environmental impact statement studies with the floor alternatives and everything else. Because you, nothing would ever get done if that's the level of hoops we have to jump through for everything. And then where we're getting with some of these MDNSs is, is we're practically writing EISs. We have the exact same issue with our federal forest projects, our, our, you know, the EA versus an EIS or something. It's the same thing. You're doing practically a full EIS to the point where it's multi-years. You can look at the, the EIS that we're doing on the bridge replacement project. And that's in upwards of multiple millions of dollars, just for the environmental studies. At what point do you, do you have to say, we're moving forward, and we're all gonna pay for that bridge in every one of those studies? So that being said, the process is there so that people can have a say. That's what, and, and so there is, and, and people have to understand that there's two processes. There's the CEPA, which is supposed to be a checklist. And then there is the actual conditional use process, or whatever process you're going through that has its own separate public comment, public testimony. And, and that's where the public is involved, as well as in the CEPA process. So there's always multiple checks maxing, and there's the appeals process on top of it. So the process is there for a reason, and I think the process does a good job. It's just that, like, everything we've been hearing about, whether it's solar or this thing down in, in Houson, everybody wants to comment now, ahead of it, but you have to comment during the right time. And that's where your voice is heard. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us along, try to keep us somewhat on schedule. Thank you all. This, that, I will, we'll close that citizen comment for now. We will have a, we'll have another one next Tuesday at, at about 1:02. I look forward to more, more citizens commenting. And Mr. Chairman, one thing for the future, I would like to see is if, I mean, we've got 50 people on here regularly, and we might be running, you know, a little late, or, and, and I want to stay to the agenda, but rather than saying you can come back next Tuesday and try to get on, I would, if there's other people, I'd like to throw it on at the end and have public, you know, push the public comment so that everybody has their say.
Yeah, or, or pick any new business, new, new business, new comments first.
Right. And, and I, I would support that. I will remind folks today is that we had at least two, maybe three commenters that commented more than once.
Right, right.
So I will generally, yes, I agree, I agree that generally speaking, I want to give everybody the opportunity that wants to have public comment, to be able to have public comment. And I appreciated that folks didn't necessarily use their whole seven minutes. You don't have to use the seven minutes, and they didn't, to allow other folks to talk.
I appreciate their study of paying attention to their local government.
Yes. That is good. And, and we will do what we can to accommodate. I want to make sure folks have an opportunity. Okay, so we are gonna move on now. We do have an update from the Big River Community Land Trust Board President, Anne Menenbach. She is, if you are, if you're on the line, go ahead. Oh, there you are. We can see you. Hopefully you can see us.
Yes, I can. Hi, Commissioners. Thank you for giving us just a couple of minutes today to talk to you about Big River Community Land Trust. First of all, yes, my name is Anne Menenbach. I'm the Board President and Founder of Big River Community Land Trust. I'm joined by Chris Heald, who is a board member as well. And I just wanted to say thank you. Last year, the Board of Commissioners supplied us with a letter to the IRS that supported our 501(c)(3) application. We were successful and were designated as a nonprofit in January. So thank you. We couldn't have done it without you, the City of Hood River, City of White Salmon, and also Hood River County. So thank you. You all provided letters and helped us move forward. So for those new Commissioners, what is a community land trust? Basically, it's a nonprofit that is organized locally, that acquires and holds land for the benefit of the community, and is focused on providing home ownership that's affordable to community residents. What that means for Big River is that we are here to develop and steward a stable supply of permanently affordable, sustainably built homes for sale, which preserve the dynamic character of our Central Gorge communities. We work in Hood River and Clickytap Counties, and we focus on funding homes for people who are low to middle income earners. So that's 80 to 120% of medium family income. So we do that through grants, fundraising, and partnerships with private and public entities, such as yourself. So feel free to interrupt me anytime, but we'll have maybe room for questions at the end. So why is a community land trust important, especially here in the gorge today with our, you know, dire crisis of affordable housing? First of all, that issue has not been solved. Secondly, community land trusts are tools that have been used since the 1970s around the country to help communities solve problems with affordable housing. The existing tools that we have in our toolbox, housing authorities and others, are really focused on either market rate housing or rental units for lower income earners. There's nobody right now focused on the 80 to 120 market for affordable home ownership in the gorge. Why is this important? Well, using White Salmon, the City of White Salmon as an example, you've got a median wage of $65,000, which if you use HUD standards of 30% of that income to be used towards mortgages and housing costs, the top house that they can afford, the top price is just under $300,000. The median home price is over 500. There is a huge affordability gap here in the gorge. So how does the CLT work? Well, the basics are that they acquire land, typically through the fundraising and donation process I mentioned earlier. The CLT develops that land and actually builds the housing for sale. And then, here's the important part. The community land trust keeps the ownership of the land. They only sell the improvements. So the CLT itself, a nonprofit, maintains ownership forever of that land and keeps it affordable for subsequent owners. The CLT land leases to the homeowner on a 99-year basis, and it's renewable. So families can inherit, if they're eligible, if, if they meet the eligibility requirements, can inherit homes, just like they would with a normal sale. If a homeowner is ready to move with the goal that the CLT has of moving them into a market rate home, then the CLT can facilitate a sale to a qualifying home buyer, keeping that home within the affordability range that we're shooting for, which is 80 to 120 MFI. What's good about that model? Sorry, go ahead.
Let me ask a question, I'm sorry. Soder, can you, can you elaborate or expand on what you mean by facilitate a sale?
Yeah. So typically, what a community land trust will do is keep a list of qualified buyers by working with other entities like housing authorities and WAGAP and Realtors. They'll keep a list of qualified home buyers that want to buy a home. So they know sort of what kind of inventory is needed. And then when a house comes up for sale, they'll go typically to the first person in line that fits that, that home. So if it's a family, maybe they need a three-bedroom. If one comes available, they come to that first person on the list and say, okay, look, we have something for sale for you. Have you taken your first time home buyer class? Have you been pre-approved for your mortgage? And we kind of help them through that process so they can go ahead and get a mortgage and then purchase that home. So the CLT really facilitates in keeping those who are eligible for homes in the know about what's available for them, and then working with other sources like the Housing Authority, who does a great first time home buyer course, working with them to really facilitate home ownership for residents of our communities.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so things that are different about the CLT model versus sort of a market rate development model, is that the price of the land is eliminated from the home price. In our area, that makes up about 25% of the home price. So we take that out of there by keeping that in CLT ownership. Secondly, the land is held in perpetuity for the purposes of affordable home ownership. And that's a really great benefit for community that CLTs are in. And then also, those homes are removed forever from the speculative market, keeping them for lower to mid-income folks. And another big thing is that CLT homeowners still get some appreciation on their homes when they resell. It's not as much as appreciation as maybe the market would be, but they get some. So they're still building wealth and getting the benefits of home ownership versus rental. So again, that's, those things are quite different from the standard market rate development. Again, homeownership's important, I think we all know, is the number one way that Americans build wealth. And so getting people from the rental market into home ownership, and then eventually into the market, is, is what we want to promote here with the CLT.
This is Jake Anderson, Commissioner District One. Have you guys looked into, when you buy on leased ground, I know like a lot of the cabins around Northwestern Lake, or what used to be Northwestern Lake, were on leased ground. And a lot of banks won't lend if you're on leased ground. And if you do, the prices seem to be higher rates. How do you guys get around that? Do you work with specific institutions? That's one of my questions. My other question is, so if you work with a family that comes in and they're making 80 to 120% of the medium family, medium wage, but then say they get a few promotions and, and now they're making really good money, what happens in that institution? You have people that need these homes, and now it seems like these people that are, could afford a, a different home, or it seems like they're getting quite the, quite the benefit that others could use. How, how do you deal with situations like that?
Sure. I'll answer your first question. We have been in conversation with folks on leased land, the specific group that you're talking about, about how a CLT could work with leased land. And there are options for bringing a CLT into that kind of situation. But I think more to your point, the question is, how do you finance those? There are local lenders that deal with community land trusts all the time, and even USDA can deal with community land trusts. It's been around long enough that many lenders are familiar with, with our processes and offer very similar rates to a standard market rate home. So yeah, we're hopeful that that's, that's gonna be not really a barrier to us. Your second question is, the perfect example of what we want to see happen. We want to support those folks who are maybe coming in at a, you know, at the beginning of their career, or, you know, young families, first time home buyers who, yeah, are starting out sort of maybe in a low to middle income wage. And then, yeah, they are going to get hopefully farther along in their career. And one thing that CLTs have proven is that folks that start out there and then sort of wage out of the CLTs, they want to move into a market rate home, because CLT homes are typically smaller, and their appreciation is capped. So you're not gonna get the same market benefits that a market rate home would. You're gonna have capped appreciation. That's one of the tools that the CLT uses to keep homes affordable for the long term. So our formula currently is 1.5% per year maximum appreciation. That's quite a bit lower than the market rate appreciation. So if you're somebody who has now enough salary to go ahead and get a market rate home, you're gonna want to do that so you can maximize your appreciation and allow somebody else who's in the lower income brackets to come into your CLT home.
May I add something to that, Anne?
Yeah.
The other aspect of it is, when they do, like, in the, with the intent of keeping these affordable, we do not allow them to develop their property any further. There are restrictions on anything they can do to change the, the floor pattern, the outside dimensions, anything like that. They are expected to maintain the properties, of course, because that's the, the improvements belong to them. But the deed, it's not a deed restriction. The lease only allows them to maintain it and not necessarily to make it any larger. So if they're getting bigger, and, you know, they're gonna be 13,000 square feet, maybe, 13, 1300 square feet, excuse me, they are going. They are going to be outgrowing this house, and they are going to want to move. And we, at that time, they will have enough equity developed that they can afford a down payment for something that's more market rate.
Thank you, Chris. That segues directly into our next slide. It just kind of shows you, this is a study that was done in Portland with a very established CLT there. Pardon?
I'm not seeing a slide. I, I don't know if, if the counselors are.
We have paper copies. We're following along on the paper.
Thank you.
We're kind of old school here sometimes.
So anyway, the next slide really shows you that significant equity can still be gained with a, a community land trust home, helping these people take that latter step from rental to ownership. So who are we talking about? Low to mid, middle income earners. This is really the heart of our workforce, you know, in the United States and for sure in the gorge. So we're focused on that 80 to 120 annual income. And most of these people are gonna be first time home buyers. This will enable them to break out of that rental market. Typical cost of construction, based on some numbers in the gorge. Again, we're looking between 1,000 and 1,400 square feet for our homes, with an estimated construction cost of about 175 a foot just for construction. So this removes, again, the cost of the land for the buyer, and is within the range of affordability for most of the low to middle income earners we're focused on. So where are we? What are our goals? We're looking for partnership, public and private partnership, to help our communities achieve our affordable goals. Those are different in each county, but we all need more inventory for homes for sale and for rent. We'd really like to be that player that helps you with that homes for sale market for affordability. We're growing our organization and our resources right now. We were formed in late 2019 and just got our nonprofit status last year. And like many nonprofits, we're dealing with the pandemic, just like everybody else. So we're moving along and we're growing as we can. And we're continuing our outreach and our awareness. We want people to know who we are and how we can help. We want to, this year, acquire land and start our first project with the goal of selling three homes in '21. We'd like to have 100 homes in our portfolio within the next 10 years in the gorge. That's a significant impact. That's a significant impact that we feel is attainable. How you can help? We wanna be uh involved in your affordable housing discussions. We are a tool and we want to be um integrated into your um, into, into your planning efforts. So we can help where needed. We're always looking for land and financial donations and partnerships. We're looking for SDC reductions, permit efficiencies with projects that we do within your jurisdiction. And potential density bonuses for community land trusts. And other ways that you find that we can help. So I didn't want to take much of your time today, um, but I do want to thank you very much and open it up for any questions. And my contact information is here in case you have questions, uh, you know, in the future.
Another question, uh, one of the heavy things, especially in the West End of Clickitat and Hood River County, the property taxes. So if you're selling, if you're given this on a ninety-nine year lease, uh, that's renewable and can be passed down. Those property taxes are still gonna get assessed on that ground. Who pays those property taxes and where's that money come from?
So typically, community land trusts apply for a property tax exemption for the land. The homeowner would still pay for property taxes on the home, the personal property taxes of the home, but we would ask, ask for an exemption.
And then do, are people allowed to rent out their homes?
Um, no, to a certain extent, what we want to avoid is a short-term rental uh issue. That we've had in multiple areas in the gorge. So we have a limit on how many days you can rent out or be gone from your home. And Chris, remind me if I'm wrong, I can't remember right now. I believe it's two months out of the year.
Two months that they can be occupying the house. But even then, any, any rental has to uh be approved by the, the land trust.
Yep, so if it's a short-term rental on, you know, one of the Airbnbs or something. That is likely not gonna be approved by the land trust.
I, I was more thinking like if somebody has to go work uh somewhere else to, you know, for six months. Are they renting out their house while they're gone?
Right, and they can come to the land trust for an exemption if that's the case.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Hopefully next, some other time, we can actually. With real slides? With real, in person, as far as, that's our goal. I mean, it's.
I, I do have a question as, as opposed to coming directly to the commissioners. Is there someone in the county that would best to approach about uh things like tax lots and, and um other maybe. Potentially available properties uh to acquire through the, through the county?
That's a good question. I mean, I would, I would typically volunteer myself, um, as far as, but that's. Yes. I mean, I guess we could, we could have that conversation if you want. I could, I could share with my seatmates rather than. You know, head you off to uh staff, which is just gonna come back to talk to the board, so.
Having to come to your board meetings in order to make these conversations is, is a little awkward when we, hey, we don't need to.
Right, right, and that's, that would be my recommendation is the.
Okay, thank you.
Set that up and we can, we can have a private conversation and, and I'll, and I can. Me or actually either, I mean, if you're, this land trust is really uh focused more on the West End of Clickitat County. I mean, I know, I, I'm not sure what your, your service area is. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be me. It could also be Commissioner Anderson if he was, if he was amenable.
And I don't know how much land we actually hold over there other than dock grade.
Right.
Well, you're, they're not looking at our land, are they? They're, they're looking, I mean.
I don't think they'd say no.
So are you, you are looking at developing individual lots? You're not looking at developing, say, a subdivision that you're looking to do three homes on?
Uh, yes, we are. We're looking at both of those options, both subdivision and non. And yes, we would and are entertaining um donations of land from municipalities. And our, our service area is all of Clickitat and all of Hood River Counties. We're mostly focused within the um, the city uh limits, however, because those are where the highest. Property values are and some of the most uh, the need for more affordable housing, although it is throughout both counties.
Uh, what happens, one thing I always ask about um nonprofits. If the nonprofit gets itself upside down, what happens in case of a bankruptcy of the nonprofit? What happens to these homeowners? What happens to, what, what are their rights?
So I haven't looked at our articles of incorporation for a while, but typically what a CLT does is those assets move into. Another entity that are serving the same public purpose within their jurisdiction. So something like the Housing Authority or some other entity that would serve a similar function and would take on those assets.
Yeah, and I, and I think there's a model for that, that a, a similar situation. Did happen locally with the uh, over in Hood River County or in Hood River, it wasn't just. But uh was uh, Hope was the organization that built and operated some uh affordable. You know, apartments and stuff, and they did get into financial difficulty and ultimately that. There was in a, there was a, an agreement in those properties. The bulk of them were transferred. I don't know that all of them were to the Housing Authority that just continued that affordable housing mission. And so.
And additionally, within our ground lease, there are um, there are protections for the landowner. Should the land that the CLT owns and is leasing ever sells for some reason like that. So there's options for purchase and those types of things built into the ground lease.
How long have you guys been in operation?
One year.
What's that?
One year.
Okay. Okay. Anything else before we? Okay, well, we'll let you go. Thanks for um reading this and I, I would, that would be my suggestion is reach out. Actually to any of the three of us, uh, if you, if you wanted. Speak for my seatmates whether they will reach back or not.
I think you're mostly vested towards that side of the county, so I would say reach to that side. Otherwise, I'm just gonna have to go pass it off to them anyway, so. Unless you're doing something in my neck of the woods.
We aren't averse to that. You know. To help the whole county.
I mean, if you're looking to get more land, go to Goldendale. You can get a lot more land for the same price.
And there's probably just as much need there too.
I, I would think there is just there is. But um Anne, you're, you're welcome to contact me. Um, you'll probably get uh peppered with about a million questions, so take that under advisement when you do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner, would you like me to forward your contact info to them?
Yes, please, forward my contact info. Okay. We're actually running ahead now because we did the two o'clock this morning.
Questions there. They had some really good questions there.
Mr. Chairman, I did reach out to the assessor, but she's not responded on her email.
Okay, well, we can move forward with the consent, uh, if folks are okay with that and get our housekeeping stuff done. If anybody had any issues or.
Do you, here, here we go. Here's a procedural question. With uh, uh situations like, you know, making motions for the consent or uh, a short plot. You have an organizational procedure that you would like one side to read it versus the other side, just so we know, or should we both go looking at each other?
Generally, if there, there, I mean, historically, there wasn't any. It was, we did literally just kind of, or sometimes it was like. It's like, uh.
We'll just do it with whichever way he's following.
Just trying to get his, what do you want? Because I gotta invite. So, yeah, I, I mean, I guess first I would raise the issue of the consent. Generally, that would be, you know, these are items that we've either, they're, they're generally things that we've already had a discussion about. Or it's just housekeeping.
Or it's in the packet that we already.
Right, absolutely, it's in the packet.
So I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda with all nine items.
For the second? Yeah, I have, oh, she must have been listening. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, all nine items, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. You've now been joined by the county assessor, Ms. Krista Schroeder.
Sorry, I had to re, no, no. Refresh my computer because I heard I had to email the assessor.
Well, we're running thirty minutes ahead, so it's not like, so I, I appreciate that you were available early. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Welcome to the county for the new guys.
Thanks for staying for the, for the old.
There was a comment about seniors.
Yeah, yes, yes, be careful.
You know, you masked, couldn't see the lips moving.
Yeah, I can definitely tell you all apart. Having spoken with all of you guys in the past, so um. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, so um, you know, typically the last few years, I just kind of came before you guys really quickly and had it on the consent agenda the same day. But since we have two new members, um, I thought they might want a little more explanation about uh the money I'm spending. So um, we have two contractors and we've had them for a while. Uh, we have one that helps us with um, like the really day-to-day functionality of, of things. He creates all the reports for us and things like that that gets pulled out of our system and stuff that we use for sending all the information to the state and all that stuff. And if our software is doing something wonky and we can't figure out why it's doing that, we call him and he says, okay, well, it's right here. This is why it's doing that. You know. So um, that is uh Mr. Lumer. He has worked for Spokane County as an appraiser for a lot of years. And um, he's con, he's been contracted with us for, well, through, all through my term. And then I think uh, uh, probably the whole four years of the prior administration. So he's pretty familiar with what we do and what we need and, and having worked for Spokane County, which has the exact same software as us. Um, he's pretty good. He retired from the Spokane County this year, so he's just contracting. He was kind enough with losing that income to still not increase his fee to us. Um, so that's been great. Our other contractor is, uh, we use him for commercial appraisal. We barely used him last year. Everything that happened, we never got to do what we wanted to for commercial. But we're, we're hoping that in the next year or two, we can get, uh, move forward with that. So that's kind of like a history um, budget notes. So in the past, um, there was money allocated in professional services to cover the amount of both contracts, which is twelve thousand dollars. Because you want to budget, you know, to the, to the most that you're, that you're gonna uh possibly need. However, um, in the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty final budget. Ten thousand dollars was removed from my professional services because typically I don't. I don't use the whole twelve thousand dollars. And in, you know, kind of goodwill of continuing with keeping the budgets down, I left it out this year as well. But um.
Non-citizen comments.
Sorry about that. But uh, you know, I just kind of want to leave it out there that y'all removed it to begin with. I went ahead and kept it, but I may need it.
Y'all.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
But I do remember it being removed.
The board does things as a whole, regardless of who, who would, who in particular was there at the time, so.
But you didn't have it in this budget because you didn't think you were gonna need it?
Well, because it was removed and I hadn't used it then. And um, we just, we typically don't use twelve thousand dollars. It's usually like two to four with Lumer. And maybe you like fifteen hundred or so with Cameron. The dollar amount was put in the contracts originally because of the proposed projects, probably going to use that amount of money. But we, we haven't, and so we left the dollar amount the same, um, but yeah.
But you may not use it all.
Right, yeah, yeah, we typically don't. And I mean, we are looking at a commercial upgrade and pro-bow, you know, and if that's the case, it won't be this year, obviously. But if we do that, commercial upgrade, uh, commercial evaluation upgrade. Will need Cameron quite a bit and probably Lumer as well. What we guys share.
And, and I would just say from a, maybe a more longer-term perspective, a longer-term look back. Because I think part of it's just based on the relationship between not just the assessor, but I think all the electeds in the board is. You know, we've always asked, ask for what you need, and if you don't need it, don't ask for it. Or if you don't know if you need it, trust, if you need something, you can come. And we have always adjusted after.
My only question was if you thought, you know, we're so, the budget was a week ago. I was kind of surprised to hear it so soon that you may not have known about it two months ago.
No, I knew, I, I knew because it was taken out of nineteen for twenty, so I left it out twenty for twenty-one.
I was, I guess I would say I would, I know you're expected to see it pushed back in for twenty twenty-one.
No, because I hadn't used it.
You still didn't think you were going.
And so more than likely, I'm probably not this year, so. And, and there's other money, um, you know, like our budgets, where, where, there's a lot of different categories in there that we can kind of move things around. And since we're not traveling for training and stuff.
I got him wound up.
And since we're not traveling for training, you know, there's probably other categories that I could.
It was just a question on, is this a surprise to you? And if it's not a surprise to you, why was it not in the book?
It's not a surprise to me for twenty twenty for twenty twenty-one.
What is your training budget usually? Sorry, I don't have that big of a.
Um, usually, well, it, it comes into two categories. So one is like five thousand and one is seven thousand, and there's a lot of other things that go out of there. So your class fees come out of one category, your hotel fees and your um, uh, that comes out of another category. So those two, and they have a lot of different areas that come out of those two, but it's, it's comes out of those.
Likely, you know, when I did training, it was usually fifty fifty, the training versus the, the expenses of getting there. Depends on which training it was. So what you're saying is there's a good chance you'll be able to use that, use that, that travel side to cover these if need be this year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so far, all the classes proposed are webinars like the DOR mandatory CEUs to be appraisers and things like that. We also, uh, we also apply for the Department of Revenue um training grants every year. So um, we usually get approved for a couple of those, so that helps with, you know, with the budget as well. Sometimes uh, if we're not advertising for hiring employees. Then um, sometimes we have a little bit of money in there that we didn't use for, for advertising as well. It can be moved around, so.
Are your assessors like on the West End, um, are they going out to homes right now? Or are they everything inside right now?
So our appraisers, uh, what we implemented last year when all of this started, we were pretty much done with. Like regular revaluation and we were hot into, you know, really new construction. We held off for a while, um, and then we just called everybody and just told them, we'll be there someday in the next three days. We're driving a white rig, it has the county emblem on it, we're gonna be following the COVID nineteen, um, you know, health requirements at the time. And um, it, it actually went over way, way better than I thought it would. We also.
I got my new construction.
We can't do construction, so we have to make sure of everything. We did, we did not do a complete second pass on new construction like we usually do. So we usually start it um, early in the spring when uh, roads are too bad to get to all of the re-bow parcels. early in the spring when, uh, roads are too bad to get to all of the revow parcels. And so we'll start the new construction that we assume, you know, is done, like, um, manufactured home placement permits that were done last fall, they're probably there. Percent completes where when we were there last year, you know, they just had a few things to finish up, it's probably done. So we start those early. And then we'll go into the newer ones. And then sometimes we have to, we come back because we know the contractor's there, but they only have the foundation. The contractor said they're gonna be done in two months, so we'll come back. Um, last year, we did a one pass. That's why you'll notice that new construction is down about twenty million. Um, but we'll pick it up this year, I'm sure, so. So we did, we started revaluation last fall. We've almost finished it up. Yes, we were visiting people's houses. We sent letters out to let them know that you're in the revaluation area, we'll be out there, white rig, emblems on the door, COVID, health. Things in, in place. We are having the appraisers go out individually. We usually do teams, two eyes are better than one. It also keeps the team integrated in quality of, uh, the projects and everything and picking them up and making sure that they're in sync. And we've not been doing that. If we needed two people for some reason at a site, we had to take two rigs. We've been trying not to do that.
So by splitting it up, only having one person go, were we able to, to catch up with our reevaluations that we stopped because you have twice as many people out there?
Well, we were never really behind on revow. What we didn't do is a second go through of new construction. I'd say we're, you know, about the same on having them out individually as having them out together. It seems like it would be more efficient, but it really isn't because not only are you driving, but you're navigating and you're drawing and you're, you're doing everything. Where before there's two and you have one driving and another one navigating and riding, writing everything down and. And then there's safety concerns, you know, so it's, it's a lot safer to have two people, um, out there. They're not always happy to see us.
Do you have a comment?
I, uh, yes, this may or may not apply to that first budget issue. So regret coming over across the hall. But, uh, we asked the departments to prepare their twenty twenty-one budgets as status quo of twenty twenty. So if something was removed in twenty nineteen, it wasn't added in twenty twenty-one. Wasn't in twenty twenty, so.
I noticed they were all essentially status quo. I was just kind of curious if she kind of knew that one was coming.
So we'll probably find other things that were taken out previously because everybody worked diligently to stick to the status quo. Issues like that may not.
But since you're here. And, and for them anyway, um, I have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, Rob, the prosecutor and our insurance company to talk about the possibilities of number one, whether it's legal. Number two, whether our insurance company would even cover us to put a little pop-up tent kind of thing outside the building. So like governor's creed, you can't go into a restaurant and eat food, but you can eat the food outside and they put a pop-up tent up. So for, like our auditor that's got to deal with seniors in this weather, if we could do something to get them out of the weather instead of standing in the parking lot, I don't know. Whatever that information is, I will bring it back to you next week. Uh, we could go from there, but I don't know, since she's here, if she wanted to plead her case. If it turns out that this is even possible.
Thank you, commissioners.
Since you brought that up. And we're ahead of time. I, I'm gonna reiterate, we are not serving the public to the best of our abilities. We are doing the best that we can, um, with being closed. We've pushed things out that we could. But once again, we are a public building funded by public taxpayers, wages paid by taxpayers. And we can't help them to the best that, that I think we could if we, you know, could have more interaction. Seniors don't want to, nor is it safe to be mailing in their income, their, uh, you know, entire IRS folders. We've had originals mailed in. We've had cash in the drop-off boxes and we don't even take cash. We, we only have applications for open space and designated forest, but we get wads of cash in our drop box. There's on, on the form for seniors, they either have to have two witnesses sign when they sign and submit everything. Or we look at everything, they sign, we sign. They're looking at waiving the witnesses and I have it looks to see if they've, uh, passed that or not. But it's hard to deal with people in the parking lot. I mean, like this morning, you know, it's, it's your, you've got original documents out there that are.
Pouring down rain and wind and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Seniors are not necessarily all one hundred percent technology and can upload and scan.
Yeah, they don't have scanners, they don't have email.
If we, we, I mean, number one, we gotta get the right answers tomorrow to even move forward. But that's, that's why I'm essentially having this meeting with, uh, insurance and the prosecutor. And then we'll have another one of these and, and, uh, insurance will say, no, we're not covering you. Or yes, we would cover you under these exceptions or these stipulations. And then we'll have the prosecutor and, and then the board can make a decision on if they want to try to make some cover so they don't have to stand in the rain or hold in a brother while they're doing what they're doing in the parking lot, so.
So under the new rules, which I guess we're gonna talk about at two thirty, um, I'm assuming we're professional services.
Because I don't actually know.
I couldn't see anything in there that said government. So professional services are recommended and encouraged to be close to the public if possible and work from home. Recommended, not required. It says that if we're at twenty-five percent capacity, and I don't know if that includes the employees or whatever it is, that we can be open with, um, and I didn't know we were talking about that, so I didn't bring that down. But, um, there's, there's specific parameters, you know, we have to have a, a safety thing in place and we have to have a cleaning thing in place. And we're doing all that already, you know, so, um, I, I, I think if that's what they're looking at, I think the insurance needs to read those and look at those. Even if it's by an appointment, I mean, I have, I, I just, you know, if, if you're taking and you're auditing somebody and you're gonna make them pay compensating taxes or additional taxes, interest and penalties, where it could be alleviated if they could just come in and sit down and say, I don't understand, and look at you face to face. There's a huge difference between dropping things off, mailing things, emailing things and working with our citizens face to face. So, um, I, I would encourage trying to figure out something, um, you know.
If, when I'm talking to the insurance guys tomorrow, and we're, we're floating this, uh, little pop-up tent idea with a desk and a couple of chairs that are six feet apart. Is there anything else that you could see needing out there? I mean, I can't imagine having a copy machine out there when nobody's occupying the space.
Yeah, no, I mean, we can do it without.
We're not making this a permanent dwelling, we're just a glorified umbrella of sorts. Would, but would you be asking for anything else along with that, say, a copy machine closer to the door? Just give me a tent and a desk and a couple of chairs and I can serve my people.
I mean, we have that all figured out, you know, some cleaning supplies, you got to spray down between each turf, each person, you know, disposable masks.
Say, we're not looking to, you know, spread COVID or have health risks, but. Serve our people a little better and keep them out of the rain, that'd be nice.
I, uh, I just want to publicly say I'm in full support of having a couple of tents outside. Um, there should be no reason why we can't do it. And I hope that our, uh, insurance says so. Um, we've updated this building. We spent a bunch of money creating plexiglass before it was even popular. And we have that ability to separate the workers from the people coming in. There's a good chance we should be able to do with the, hopefully with the new updates codes, uh, that they can come in by appointments. You're seeing that in a lot of different things. But if you can get your haircut, you can go talk to your, you know, your creator. So thank you, Dan, for taking that on. I would forward to.
Any questions about my contract at all?
No.
Okay. I, I do have like one more quick thing then, since we're here. Um, so I.
That's okay, because I have something quick back.
I listened to your discussion this morning that was scheduled at two today, um, about appointing.
Oh, yes.
Appointments for boards and commissions. I would humbly beg that the electeds and directors are included in the, your, your process. In the past, Lee would let us know that, hey, you have, you know, this board member or this committee member that's coming up. Their term is expiring. And Lee would call and say, you know, do, do you, you know, do you know if they want to come back? Do you want them back? And then if it was a yay, I'm, I'm assuming, and I was gonna talk to you about this, but you would then go to the commissioner of that district and say, hey, this appointment's up and they want to renew.
I did not really go to the board because they were okay with them initially.
Okay.
And you're the one, your office works with those particular appointees on the, uh, open space.
That's why, at least me personally, I don't know what they would do with their district's appointees. But I contacted you. To make sure you had, you know, no conflicts or anything there, because I don't want to throw a wrench in your machine either, so. Uh, hopefully that happens in all of the machines, but.
Yeah.
Sound like we're trying to create a jury duty.
And then if there was somebody that didn't want to, uh, you know, serve longer, um, you know, the, the, the pool from my experience has been both from, you know, my office as well as from the commissioner of that district. That's, that's what we did. Because the, the director or their staff or the elected and their staff, they're the ones that are down in the grind working with these committees and boards. And it has to be a good working relationship. We have to be able to work together. And, um, we've seen when it doesn't. You know, the auditors had issues, um, I've had issues. And, um, so it, it, I, I, I would just humbly ask that you include, you know, the offices and the officers and the electeds. The electeds and the directors or their staff or whoever it is that they allocate for working on that because, you know, I mean, you guys have the right to appointment, but we gotta work with them.
That's a really good.
Are you saying we have frustrating people out there?
Absolutely not.
Well, and I can say from, you know, that, that is a really good point. I think we missed that this morning in our discussion. Cause I, and I was, the, one of the issues or points I was gonna bring up this morning, just as further evidence why this is important is that we have had dysfunctional boards.
Yes.
That didn't work well together. Part of that prompted why we have that, that, um, boards and commissions expectation, you know, kind of here's the rules of the, of the road with it, which were pretty much unst- was just sort of the understanding. But then there were, sometimes folks didn't really understand that, oh, I, I'm, I am an advisor. I'm not a, I'm not a decision maker necessarily. I'm a, oh, and that's why it was really important to, to try to get that all down. Why you have policies so that they understood. So folks coming in understood, okay, here's, this is really what your role is. And to try to get rid of some of that conflict, which I think it did. I think it didn't help. With once, uh, you know, there was some education that came with that, but it's really, I hadn't really thought about including. You're absolutely right, the, the directors, the electeds that have to work on those might want to have some, uh, input. Not necessarily in the, in the choice per se, but just the.
Should be kind of taken into account during your application. When you're going over a resume per se, you would be talking to the people that's gonna have to work, work with them and, and reach out to them, extend an all-granch.
The expectations, that, that is great because that lets you know you have to be a team player. You can't have one bully that rules the, you know, the whole thing. And, um.
I don't recall that's a specific prohibition against that in our handbook. Phone call from their commissioner saying, knock it off. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I will say the only time I've ever threatened to go to the board and have somebody's appointment withdrawn was because of that. And then they were, they were being a bully.
And if they should be reprimanded by their commissioner to fly right or, or you're gonna be replaced.
And the other thing too is, is, I'm sorry, I'm gonna use the y'all again, but y'all don't necessarily hear the day-to-day things, you know, because you guys have a higher oversight. And so, you know, you might not, you know, the, the two groups might be doing their best to work together and not say boo to anybody, you know? But if you, you know, go to that director, elected or whatever it is and say, hey, how's it, how's it going, you know? Maybe that opens a door or have your staff do it because you have great staff. So, um, you know, to say, hey, are you guys okay? You know, I mean, it just, it just helps.
Although I will say, I, sometimes I'm afraid. I ask that and they will tell me.
You have my phone number. If you have any problems with any district reappointments, I would like to go about it. I will talk to them directly and, and hopefully take care of the problem. If not, we will make a motion to replace. Nobody's invaluable and, and replaceable.
With that being said, as much as I wish we were at thirty thousand feet, we hear about it all.
All right, I'm gonna preserve my last two minutes. I ask you. Can you, um, are you gonna be around or can be in on our Thursday workshop?
Got it on the schedule.
Good, because I'm, and I'm not expecting, but I, I, because I'm, I'm hoping our workshop, it's, it's gonna be as much about asking questions about so that we know kind of what information, uh, when it comes to these big projects as far as the. You know, kind of what we're, what we're thinking as far as the, uh, kind of the taxing scheme is gonna be. And I would love to, it's not gonna happen this year just because of the way the legislature is. But I do think long-term for, and this should be an issue, I think this would be something commissioners, treasurers and assessors could work together at the state level as far as I think we need some different way of, I, I think, I, I'm just, I'm, just because I'm concerned about the way these projects have gone, I'm thinking of wind right now and the depreciation and what that potentially could matter in, you know, because these projects, whether it's wind or solar, they are principally, and they are gonna continue, they're gonna be built in the rural part of Washington State, not, so we generally have smaller tax bases that they, they're a disproportionately big footprint in our counties. And I don't know, I think there, we need a, I'd love to strategize with you what you think would be the fix. If, maybe there is no problem, maybe I'm fretting over nothing, but I'm, I've just always been worried about the, you know, what I see, what appears the trends are with the, you know, what that means, especially not so much for the county general fund or the county road fund, but for individual smaller districts that they can, you know, you got a project moves into your district, great, until it starts depreciating.
Right. And I think it would be good, you know, I've met, um, with you guys individually and together on, you know, like how wind is assessed. And just how like the whole, um, tax dollar budget process works for how y'all collect your tax dollars and all that stuff. And I think that would be beneficial, um, to have that discussion too. Because, you know, so, some of the ways that people, districts can keep, you know, the taxes low is just because you have a billion-dollar.
Right, doesn't mean you have.
Project come in, it doesn't mean you have to take a hundred percent of your share of that billion dollars. You know, and, and, um, yeah, and then also just really quick too. Rob and I were discussing, uh, getting the resolutions and certifications from the taxing districts to the assessor's office in an earlier timeframe. And one of the things that we're actually gonna do, uh, district education this year kills us. And, um, one of the things that I am going to remind all the districts is your resolutions and your certifications or, you know, your tax dollars doesn't have to be processed hand in hand with your budgets. Because the, uh, statute requires those, uh, certifications to then be certified by you to me by November thirtieth. And if I had my ducks in a row, which we're getting there. and I had my certifications done before November, no taxing district this year would have gotten increased, none. Because I didn't get, I didn't, they, none of them were certified.
Right.
Um so uh but since, you know, I'm behind on on getting my certifications done, then it's been okay for everybody in the past, but we're we're getting better every year. And at some point, I'm gonna be certified on time, and that's gonna be a huge problem.
Right.
For the taxing districts.
Not having to worry about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for
Yeah.
for being in on the on Thursday, so.
Yeah, I saw it and I'm like, okay, let's put down my schedule even though we're up to here with Webby's right now.
And I appreciate this commissioner bringing up the the problem you see with the potential for uh de- decreased values over time. That was a big issue during my campaign, something I wanna get to the bottom of as well.
Yeah, that's like a really whole discussion. It would be nice to just have a workshop.
I don't know how she's gonna piggyback on Moshi without having her own.
Well, no, she's not. That's why I said I'm not. I just want.
I can do an abbreviated, hey, this is what they pay into, this is how it depreciates, this is how it's assessed.
Right.
On on Thursday, um I've already started a a quick little, you know, blurb for y'all. Um but I I think a future workshop with a discussion and kinda get down into the nitty-gritty on like I I Greg and I have been working together too, and it's like I I used to say, well, what's your problem? Why are you worried? You know, but um because it's personal property, personal property is personal property. But when you take a look at, you know, what it's doing with the rates and everything and um that it is.
That's what I, that's why I really wanna understand it, because maybe I should be worrying, maybe I'm worrying. Quick question, I don't need to, but I'm a worrier.
Let's say Knight Road. Is that tax district thirty-seven? Do you know off the top of your head?
No.
No, don't know off the top of your head.
No, there's like sixty-some taxed.
Right, right, no. I just, I know pump storage down there is connected into Golden Dale for testers at thirty-seven. My worry is if you stick that one in there, we could have the deflated values thing that you were talking about.
Well.
Brings up one of my concerns with my.
So what you look at when a project goes into an area, so like, let's say it was TCA thirty-seven. It doesn't just affect, so a tax code area is multiple districts that creates that box. If you look at a a project in a TCA, the county general, everybody pays the county general. Everybody. So even though the project is in TCA thirty-seven, it's going to affect every, everybody in the county. And this is something that I heard out there that people, you know, weren't understanding. The county road is the same way. Everybody except within this incorporated cities pays into county road. Your EMS, almost everybody pays into EMS, except your extreme east side.
If I get what you're saying correctly, if there was a solar farm out there, if there was a pump storage there, and then two years from now, they never had to pay another tax, the people that were in that tax district wouldn't be held at a higher tax rate than the people outside.
Well, they.
They would be for the ones that were specific to that district.
If the districts asked for that amount.
Would.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, and that's where I'm saying my concern is.
Yeah, I I, yeah, and if you guys would individually, I know we have a thing scheduled, but and if you guys individually wanna come up and we, you know, we can do, uh I know I worked with the commissioner in the past on saying, okay, let's say this comes in. You know, this is what it's gonna happen to the different districts or whatever, and but I need a few weeks' time to do that.
You guys wanna have an individual meeting, but I would way rather have this on a Thursday where, because the question you asked, I'm gonna go, well, that's a great question. A week from now, I wish I knew the answer to it.
I uh I would prefer it as a workshop as well. I think with everything we have coming, this is very important.
Our workshops.
I can't do any in this month, please, please. You guys want tax dollars this year?
Please.
Our workshop's gonna be using meetings for the public too, you know?
Well, until we're open, yes.
Good. Any public is.
Yeah, anything at the public, it's open.
We're meeting, it's open to the public.
It's open to the public.
Yeah, or, yeah, open to.
Our little private meeting that's gonna go on the end of this month, when you get unbusy, we'll just make the workshop meeting, so.
Okay.
You just have to uh let my boss over here know. What he wants best for me.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you, Krista.
Fantastic.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
And when I find out, when I find out tomorrow, I'll let you know, even though I won't have really any answers till I talk to them after.
I'm gonna be curious here in a minute.
Actually, uh if we can put that tent up um and we have no issues, there's no potential liability, I think. You don't need board approval to do that.
That was just. Where do you get the tent, staffing desk?
We don't have to, they'll staff it when they come down. Somebody doesn't have to be there.
Correct, but you know.
They're already, I mean, I'm sorry.
I mean, we don't have a couple of works to see if we have a tent. Uh if we have a desk, all those things, which is why I was saying, I'm not making budget decisions without the board's approval, but.
I'll volunteer. I might have two tents I can volunteer for.
Yeah, I'd rather use a plummy tent just cuz it's not a liability thing, but I I don't think it's a big deal.
I don't think it's a big change anyway.
Um but I think the people out there would like it. Anyway, sorry.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We're gonna, we are gonna have a a discussion regarding the governor's healthy Washington roadmap to recovery. And our wonderful um health director is gonna enlighten us and um illuminate all, so I have no confusion over what was the newest.
Well, you have high hopes today.
Yeah, all right. It's an aspirational goal.
I'm sorry to see you're gonna be very disappointed.
Okay.
You do have Jeff King on there.
Oh, yes, I see him until Jeff, yeah, we'll have, well, Jeff can chime in too. And I guess between all of us, we're gonna try to have our best understanding.
It might look like I'm on my phone, but I've actually got the roadmap thing open here.
Yeah, I always have to have the paper.
I'm not, I'm not toying with Facebook or something whenever we're talking.
Good, good. It might be more riveting now. Um so as you know, the governor put out the roadmap to recovery last week. I would like to preface this by saying that they did ask for public health input across the state. Um I don't know that there was any health director that thought this was a good idea, including myself. I'm very frustrated uh by this guidance, and uh I just wanna make it clear to everyone that I personally am not responsible for this guidance. We're just interpreting it. Cuz I think there's confusion occasionally that we actually put this together, so. Um I think that it was put together in a way, you know, they put us in a region, in a region, and I I think there's definitely benefits for being in the region. One of the things they're looking at is um ICU capacity, and so Vancouver and Clark County is one of the places that we do send our cases to be hospitalized if they require ICU care for COVID. So I think it's important that we do kinda look at what their hospitalization rates are in their ICUs, because that does impact our county. So so in that, I I can see that there's value in, you know, taking that into consideration into our phases. Um the rest of it, I'm just really struggling to get on board with. Um I think this is just gonna lead to a lot of confusion. Um I had to read this document multiple times to really kinda understand what the metrics were put out and how to be able to message just just to the general public, I think is a pretty tall order. Um every Friday, they're gonna reevaluate the numbers from the previous two weeks. And then on Monday, we'll move into either phase one if we're doing worse or phase two if we're doing better. So essentially, they're gonna have us flip-flopping back and forth with, you know, potentially what the what the openings are as far as what you can do with your time and what kind of businesses can be open and how many people they can have. There's absolutely no way to enforce this. Asking businesses to go back and forth on what their expectations are on a weekly basis, I think, is absolutely asinine. I think that's gonna be detrimental to our businesses in this county. And uh I I just, I I reached out to my, to some of our representatives at the state level to additionally talk about what we can do in a county to to reiterate the fact that this is a terrible idea. Sure, that's probably not what I'm supposed to say, but that's where I'm at with it.
That was not what I was expecting you to say, but I was about to give you a standing.
It is, it's just frustr- I mean, there's so, public health is so frustrating right now, you, this is decreasing public confidence. Now you're like, what phase am I in? I can't tell you that. I can tell you right now how many cases we have in this county. I can tell you for ballpark, just off the top of my head, how many people have been hospitalized. I can keep track of that and I can share that information with you, but now you wanna know what phase we're, so now I have to, and it's not just me, I mean, I'm be, I'm making it about me. Now I have to remember what phase we're in, what that means on your phase sheet. Oh, last week, you could have five people in your commissioners' chambers. This week, you can't have any.
Right.
Like, where are we at? We're setting people up for failure. And we're setting people up to just completely ignore the rules, which, to be fair, most people are anyway, but that's not necessarily the point.
So um I don't know if you looked at what Yakima County's done.
I did.
And what's going on in the Yakima Herald. Um how do you feel about what their county commissioner is doing?
So I'm having a similar discussion, I'm gonna caveat for just two seconds, uh I'm having similar issues with the way they're rolling out the vaccine. I'm also frustrated about that. I feel very angry today. I'm not usually this angry. Um they, you know, the the state's imposing these you know, statewide restrictions that aren't applicable to our county. I mean, I think Yakima going in and saying, you know, we're gonna take care of this ourselves, I I think that's good, but at the same time, are we gonna shoot ourselves in the foot? And we've had this about the vaccine, the vaccine rollout. So we're currently vaccinating people who can, are considered phase one A healthcare workers. And based on the conversations I've had with the community partners with Skyline and KVH and North Shore, um they feel like we're getting towards the end of vaccinating all the people that would, that want the vaccine that apply under phase one A. So then, do we as a county decide to move to phase one B and start getting the vaccine out? Cuz in my personal opinion, not my professional opinion, we should. Um, do we move ahead with that as a county? Or do we follow the state because that could potentially decrease our ability to get vaccine in the future because now we're not applying? So it's a very, there's a lot of fine lines, there's a lot of gray area. I don't know that I disagree what they did because I don't think that that wouldn't be a good thing for our county. I don't I I think there's a lot of also bigger picture things that we have to consider before making a decision like that. But I mean, I just don't like being tied to four other counties.
So so back to the vaccine.
Yes.
Do we know that we, cuz I first, and I and I said it this morning, I mean, I'm I'm as frustrated as you, where the the it makes no sense to me that I am tied. You know, if we're trying to get the vaccine, cuz and I, cuz I was, I don't know if you're prepared, and I don't know what, like, we know what we got as far as in stock. Do we have an idea? You know, I I hear, but I have no, I have no hard numbers as far as what we vaccinated, but my uh the impression I'm getting is that we've pretty much exhausted our one As. It confirms what you've said. And yet, we are now sitting, waiting with vaccines, sitting on the shelf.
Yes.
And we have one B folks that are ready, what we could move into, but we're, we can't because the state won't let us if we follow their guidance. We're all gonna move as a region or as a state, whatever, through these phases. And so uh I had mentioned this morning, that's something, what authority, understanding the the downside that could happen if the local board of health said, we're moving forward, we're moving, we're just gonna release the vaccines that we have. I'm assuming the downside is that we're out of compliance, we won't get any more vaccine. And so it's like our, whatever doses we have, yeah, we got those out, and now you're gonna go to the end of the line is is the punishment, basically, for doing it, cuz that's the only thing that prevents me from saying if we've gone through the list and we've got all our As done, let's move on to the Bs. And if we do all the Bs, let's go to the Cs.
What percentage of our As are accepting the vaccine? Do you know that?
I don't know that. I can't.
That reads my mind every time I wanna ask it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll think slower.
That's why when you first start talking, I'm like, he's gonna say it, he's gonna say it.
I can't speak to that only because we had a basic idea of healthcare providers that were in this county only based on how many people were employed at KVH, how many people were employed at Skyline, how many people were um employed at uh wherever I work, the health department.
No pressure, no pressure.
That was. But there's a lot of people that are healthcare providers that live in this county that do not work in this county, so I can't speak to percentage-wise what our uptake is, but we've um I think we've had around three thousand doses in county so far. I I believe roughly about a third of those have been given out as as one A, so.
And that's the the first dose.
That's the first dose, yeah.
So so if we wait long enough, we can use the second dose on him, right? So then we'd be.
Which should be starting next week.
So if we have three thousand shots on hand, you said we put a thousand in somebody's arm already? Interesting, that's a bigger number than I expected.
But still, I thought.
Mr. Chairman.
As men behind to give the second shot.
Go ahead, we had a.
That's okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, there you go.
This, this is Jeff King with Emergency Management.
Yes.
Um if I understood correctly, uh yesterday KVH started giving the second dose to people.
So we have some second dose.
Yep.
That's fourteen on one and twenty-eight on the other.
It's twenty-one and twenty-eight.
Is it twenty-one and twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. So even so, if we know we've hit most all of the the one As that we're gonna get with the first dose, if we subtract out the second dose, that still leaves us a thousand shots just at KVH, right?
No, that's that's the county total.
That's county one.
That's a, that's a thousand doses of.
Yeah, but you're still, like I said, you gotta plan for the second shot.
Right.
So you gotta hold it back in the rear just to make sure you got it, cuz you never know when to get the next shipment.
Right, but that that gives.
Five hundred people, yeah.
But that's, it still allows five hundred plus more that we know we're not gonna need.
Right.
And everything I'm seeing is is that everybody's getting yelled at because we're not getting them out fast enough.
Right.
And so if we're, if we start getting them out fast enough, the only thing I think we need is a pat on the back.
We've, I honestly, I think we've done better than any other county in the gorge, based on the feedback I've gotten from other counties, so. I I just think we should definitely appreciate the hospitals, and both hospitals in North Shore have really been the ones that have been doing the doses. We unfortunately, just don't really have the capacity with our case investigation right right now.
So the the, let's say, three thousand doses that we were given, was that given, oh, hey, here's these because it's for the A people? Do we know when we're gonna get more? Is there a plan for distribution?
No.
Is there, you're just, um you're waiting for the UPS truck to show up with your Amazon package?
Yeah, that's exactly what is happening. And at one, one location this week received a shipment of vaccine they didn't actually order. It was sent to the wrong place, which is just, I mean.
Did we keep it?
We keep it.
Oh, it's not, we're not leaving this county.
The most dangerous words are up from the government, if you're to help.
That's very true. So I just.
Okay.
There's just been an insane amount of challenges. It's just been roadblocks from the state level. And to plug my own political agenda, this is exactly why I am against, you know, the states really working towards that health district. So there'll be more state-controlled and more regional, and this is exactly why we can't let that happen. Cuz we'll just end up in scenarios like this over and over and over again.
So Erin, are you saying that you guys haven't done any, you're not giving any doses out?
We are.
Oh, you are. So you do have that ability.
Yeah, but we're just doing smaller clinics, so you know, we're doing ten or twenty where they're doing a hundred or something like that.
For the people that are tuning in on the phone, can you maybe quickly go over who is qualified to get the shot right now today as we speak?
So right now, we're focusing on phase one A, so those folks that are high-risk healthcare workers, uh first responders, anyone in congregate living settings that um like new home farms, and we made sure that they were all vaccinated, um and anyone who works in a healthcare facility.
Now, when we talk about first responders, we had a question about first responders earlier on whether the nine-one-one dispatchers are actually first responders or not, would they qualify for getting a shot?
The the guidance is face facing interactions, so if they are showing up at people's homes and have been interaction.
They're not having face-to-face, then no, but volunteer fire that could go face-to-face would.
Yeah, and we felt in this county that um even though I think firefighters are in a later phase um and police officers, we felt in this county that frequently those are the folks that are first on scene. Um and that that would, there would be a lot of benefit in our county to including them into that.
So that was a part of the governor's thing. That was something we pushed here locally.
Yes.
Right, and that, and that's one of those things I'm saying is, I, I'm wondering how much latitude we can exercise without. Like I'm, for me personally, I'm not speaking for the board, this is just me. I'm saying I'm willing to push to the level of, I don't wanna fall off where I'm gonna get us punished. But I think it's a, I think it's a credible thing to say, oh, we, we've only used a third of our doses and we're waiting. We're gonna just move forward, and I think that's very credible to anybody. It's like, and if we, and if we do end up getting punished, it's gonna be really easy to go and say, hey, that's. That's foul, and I know there's gotta be other folks in our situation that are thinking the same thing.
I would like to do the same, but I'm afraid if you get punished, you actually killed somebody.
Why, I know, and that's, I'm saying, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take us to getting punished, I want, but I do want, like, we made a local decision. That in our case, law enforcement is the first responder, they are, and we're gonna go ahead and vaccinate. To my knowledge, we're not gonna get punished.
I get your frustration, it makes absolutely no sense to have vaccines sitting in the refrigerator waiting for somebody up in Olympia to get off their hidey inside a piece of paper.
So you might be more worried about getting punished than somebody dying. I'm more worried about not doing something than somebody dying.
Yeah, it's like I said, it's a show game of either way you're screwing.
I don't want anybody to die, and I don't want anybody to get punished, but I don't, I think if we wait for, it's like.
Well, here's the question, we're talking about waiting for guidance to push us to the next level, since you're saying we're essentially done with phase we're in.
We need to go to Bs.
Has, have we tried to pick up the phone and argue and say, why are we not going, and we're just no answer, or where we are?
I have not called yet, I knew I was gonna speak with you all, and I, you know, just from a political standpoint. Cause there will be politics with this sort of decision, like to know that I had your support yesterday, I talked to the hospitals. Cause I wanted to make sure they felt like they were done with the 1A, so I've been doing my homework.
That, that cover needs to come as much as possible from the Board of Health versus the county commissioners.
Well.
I mean, we, I know.
Four of us are sitting here out of the five.
I know, but, well, no, 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 we are not. There's only three now.
Three out of the five, cause I'm not on the board.
And I don't, and I don't know that there is, and the health officer, where it's like, if we're, to me, that would give. The Board of Health should be completely divorced from politics. It doesn't have anything to do with politics. And if the Board of Health is saying it makes, it makes sense for us to, this is what we wanna do, is that we're done with our As. We still have all these doses, you know, our recommendation is that we move ahead to the next people on the list, which are the Bs, and let's, let's go.
I agree, I just don't wanna hold off the phone call until the Board of Health gets together.
Well, no, they're getting together next week, but the other thing is.
Phone call this week.
So I'm absolutely expecting different guidance to come out either today or tomorrow for the state, which is gonna just. Yeah, so that, you know, on the news this morning, they talked about the CDC or whoever has the vaccine. They've been holding back the second doses, and they were gonna just allocate it out in small batches, just to make sure that that's figured. So a decision was made for them to just push it out, so we have, that would mean to us, there's more doses coming. And with that potentially changing who's on what phase, which is just another PR nightmare. Because what I told you this morning.
Is now.
Is now completely defunct, so.
I have a question. Were they supposed to get the second vaccine, or, God, I really, I screwed up, I used the word vaccine. To me, a vaccine is, you will never get the disease if you take the vaccine. I call it a treatment measure, because you're still gonna get it, it's gonna be like something. Anyway, data, um, twenty one days or twenty eight days. I mean, is that like a to the T, you need to be here twenty one days if you're twenty five days, it changes the effectiveness at all?
No, you can be, you can be late, you can't be early, so.
So where I'm at right now is, is you haven't made the phone call to see if, hey, we've done our stuff, we wanna move to phase, you know, 1B. The only downside of that is they say, oh, you have extras, send them over here, and we lose them. I don't think they're gonna do that, so I'm not worried about the dance. Okay, so we made the phone call, yet they're gonna come out with new guidance tomorrow, that's gonna change everything.
Potentially.
Potentially change everything. We're gonna be in here on Thursday, if there's a big change, we'll get to hear about it, discuss it. We've got a Board of Health next week, um, if we can move on to ways 1, 1B before next week. And all we need is a small little push to do it, uh, I don't have a problem.
Well, that's why I was saying authorize the phone call now, because we can't take action on Thursday.
I don't think we need a month.
No, I mean, I can, I just, like, I'm not gonna make unilateral decisions.
Right, well, I tried to ship the guidance today.
Yeah.
I did see Jeff shaking his head a while ago, and I have no idea what we said that made him shake his head.
All right, unmute yourself, Jeff.
So I just wanna, just wanna circle this wagon all the way around.
Um, as far as this specific subject goes, I'm, I'm okay. I was shaking my head in frustration, just as Erin is and all of you. With certain, but, yeah, the state is, state is allowing vaccination phases to move forward. At a statewide level, and that is inappropriate, in my professional opinion, I will go that far. As the Emergency Management Director for this county, that is not appropriate to serve our citizens.
Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so did you guys get that email about the, what Yakima County Commissioners are doing?
I did, I only looked at it a little bit, I wanna, I wanna unders, I wanna understand what they, I mean, they're, they're just basically taking a position.
Right.
They don't have any authority one way or the other.
Yeah, and I think they're just.
A statement, are you saying you wanna make a statement here, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying we need to discuss it. Um, I understand where the Yakima County Commissioners are coming from. I understand that for every political action, there's some sort of blowback. Uh, but I also understand and agree with Erin that, um, the Yakima County is, is in that same thing. They're saying, we need local control, we know how to manage it, we're not stupid, let us do what's best for our, for our community and our county and our people. Uh, just going along with the health district, you know, the big health district idea from the state. Do we use this as follow their suit a little bit? Maybe, maybe soften it a little bit, but make it very clear that we like our individuality here and how we do things here. And that, uh, we have full support of our own health director and the direction that she's going.
I would say for me, I'm, I'm fine, I'm always gonna be about local control. I don't want, because I think this has been used in the past, I don't want this used. If we took a step for that, that that is the county commissioners or the county. Saying that all of this is a bunch of baloney and there is no COVID, there is, you don't have to wear face masks. This is all a bunch of, this is a, this is all a hoax, this is all.
You're asking Jake?
No, no, he's not. No, no, I'm not, but I have seen this used, no, this is, I have seen this twisted. I have seen, I have seen things, and I'm thinking as an example of, you know, I've had conversations with the sheriff. The sheriff is not, you know, at least my interpretation is the sheriff generally is not saying. Don't do, it's, it's more about local control, and it's not. But I also have seen post after post after post, where people are using that, twisting it to say. This other thing. I can say, for me, as a commissioner, I don't support that. As far as I actually believe in this, I believe in the guidance from the CDC, but I also believe. I think our citizens understand that, and they, they will do the right thing. It's like, I'm not complying because the governor told me to comply, I'm doing it because I actually believe in that kinda stuff. And science, I think that's, the health departments, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm following local, local guidance. And expertise as far as what measures need to be taken. If we can do it in a way that is about local control and people have brains in their heads and they're gonna do it. And have it not get twisted into.
Political.
Political, frankly crap, I will do it, so.
How you really feel.
Get me there, and I will support.
Me reading that, it comes off kinda twofold. Number one, it comes off what Erin says. You know, we don't need, you know, Olympia or Clark County determining our health policies here. And I, Dave, a hundred percent agree, local control, just like Erin, boom. And then ended. We don't need to get into the political and any mask wearing or any of that. Just get into the, the health board decision of local control over a health district.
So my question, my question is that, is that a, something we put forward or something the Board of Health puts forward? Where is the proper point for that, so that we make our frustrations heard and understood?
I think that would have to be taken up with the Board of Health, if whether they, all members wanted to sign on to something like that.
Because I.
I'm willing, but each one of them would need to be asked.
I hate to say it, that's a political statement, no matter how you put it.
I, and I need to be clear, like, I don't, it's nice that the state is like, okay, here's these metrics, but I. I, there's a lot of mitigation to do, sometimes it's nice when they're actually like putting together the metrics. So we're like, hey man, the state said, there's a little bit of deniability there. But at the end of the day, this county on its own, not interregion, is really what we're looking for.
That's the big, that's the big picture. Cause that's a long term thing, where I mean, these are two different things.
Yes.
The COVID response and all that, that is, God willing, is a short term issue. That is going to, you know, we're gonna emerge out the other side, you know. Regionalization of, you know, health districts, all that stuff, that's forever till they change their mind. But that's for, that will have impacts way into the future. Really bad things, and I, I agree as far as the, um, so I think that. My wor, my real worry is that, where they said they, they took input when they were, you know, State Department of Health was. When they're, it pretty much was universal from at least talking to folks around the state. Local health folks were all opposed to it, so it was like, they took the input, and it was like, thanks for your input. We're ignoring that all, and we're just, this is what we wanna do. And my concern is, you know, if there's gonna take legislative action, if they're gonna do something. It's gonna be this year, when it's gonna be really hard to try to, to educate legislators. On why this is a bad idea. And, and I'm really worried it's just gonna happen, because we've already said we don't like it, we don't wanna do it. And they, they just did it anyway.
Yeah.
So, so I guess I'm looking at this from, it's easy for us to deal with this, we're involved in it every day. What I worry is, is that we're, as, last I heard, we're really close to being able to hit phase two in terms of the numbers. We were a little off in our region, Clark County's doing well. We hit that for one week. All my restaurants go out and they buy supplies and they get ready to open, and then, and then Friday comes around and then they say, no, you're shut down. Well, I guarantee you, those restaurants are not gonna let that food spoil again.
No, I mean, it's people too. Right, you brought all your staff back, now you're laying them back off, that's inappropriate.
And, and so at some point, I mean, there's gotta be some, some law, someone with logic up there in the governor's office.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, and I mean, you go to phase two, nobody's gonna go backwards.
But we've done it once.
Well, it's true, we did, but you know how that's worked, so.
No, I agree, and I always say that about all, all government. To me, all government, it's the same thing. People want to follow the rules, whatever it is, if they, there's, there's general. People don't follow rules because of fear of being punished generally. It's because things make sense, they do it voluntarily, you're not gonna, it's the same thing with. But you are, you are going to make people not follow the rules, because you're, you're making it impossible. And that undermines all of it, because then when we say something, and we want you to do this, what. That they've been conditioned now to not follow rules, because they just don't trust any of it, cause we flip around all the time.
Exactly, and it, the set of rules is impossible to follow, the metrics are impossible to follow. I, I just, they put us in a really, really bad spot, and I just think any pushback we can give up in Olympia. Would be very much appreciated.
For direction, would we be asking Erin to work up some sort of. Something we can send to Olympia as the Board of Health? That says, look, you know, we, who knows how many times it'll change between now and next, next Thursday. But at least be working up something to show our frustration with this situation.
Right, and I think we can do it in a way that's not necessarily attacking the, it's like, I get it. There's folks in Olympia, and we can all say they're all a bunch of idiots, and I'm not gonna necess, well, okay, I'm not gonna say that. I'm not. I think sometimes they are so focused on their little piece of it. Like I think they, some of them really do have the best of intentions, they don't understand the practical implications. Or the practical implications in, on the rural part of the state, where it's like, that may work, okay? And I, I get what you're trying to do. I don't think anybody in Olympia is trying to bankrupt restaurants, they're not trying to, that's not the goal. They just don't understand that what you're doing, that is what you're doing. And that you need to understand that, find a different way. We all have the same goal, we do. Everybody has the same goal. Everybody wants as many people to be as healthy and not die from this or get sick. Well, it is, and it doesn't have to be where it's like, you're the enemy because you're wrong. It's like, no, you're, you're, I, I will accept what you're trying to do, it's just that this isn't doing it, it won't work. And find a different way, we've got to find a different way.
You have higher hope, cause we're nine months into this and they ain't figured it out yet, so I'm kinda lost of what they're gonna.
But I don't think that the, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Just on when you call on me.
I'm sorry, I am fired up.
Um, as the Board of Health, you guys need to have that discussion as well as hear from your, um, public health officer. And see what her recommendations are as well.
And I'm, I'm sure Erin would talk with our public health officer before that, and hopefully have something for us that we could move.
Do we, we want to, and, and I don't carry the weight, just throw an idea. Do we wanna have her write it up for the Board of Health, or do we want it coming from the Commissioner through the Board of Health?
Through the Board of Health.
Too much of a bigger.
Right, although the staff to the Board of Health is the same person.
Right, true, true.
And is that, and is that what you'd like to see here?
Even with this resolution, this, have we, I guess I'd say figured out when we're making the phone call. Uh, to see if we can distribute vaccines or not. I, I still would like to see that phone call happen, I don't know, before the Board of Health meeting next week.
Oh, it's, yeah, no, I'm.
No, I mean, why don't, yeah, no, we, I, I think we can, I think we can reach out, any of us can reach out, cause again, it's not.
I, I think it would be less political coming from her to reach out. Throw political into it, and I don't think it's a political question.
And don't you know, we have, we've given you enough homework this week. Delegation, my friend, delegation.
Well, that's what I said, I think, I, I would love it, personally love it, if she would make the phone call on her behalf on whether we could throw out the vaccine. And then we have an answer to that.
Not throw it out.
Inject it carefully.
Move on to the next. We're not, we're not asking to really go off, we're like, we just are ready to move forward in the plan that we all kinda came up with. Let's, again, I'm not, I'm not attacking their plan, I, I think BC, I think those are probably the right.
Make sure you wait a couple hours so that we can all come down from this meeting to a normal level.
The crazy thing is you guys are all fired up more than me, and I would have never thought of that.
I just, it's been really frustrating that they continue to change the rules. You know, we're just, we're the messengers, we're getting shot, and I'm tired of getting shot.
Right, Director King, I see you unmuted and shaking your head.
Yeah, I, well, I was gonna say something else to start, but I'll, uh, agree completely with Erin. We've been taking slings and arrows, uh, for a long time now, both public health and emergency management. For things that are completely outside of our authority, let alone our control. But I would like to just make sure that, for a point of clarification. I agree completely, first of all, that we need to move forward in the vaccination, uh, distribution as a county. Based on when we, uh, you know, are, are finished with whatever phase and ready to move on. However, the, the number of vaccine dosages is not our only limiting factor. I just wanna make sure everybody in the public that's listening, I know the board knows this, and of course Erin. But, um, the staffing to be able to give, you know, a certain amount of doses per day. And that's part of what KVH has reached out to Emergency Management for help with. Um, and their concerns are, you know, we have the actual qualified, trained people to, to give that shot in the arm. So those are two limiting factors. I don't want everybody to just think that if, if we do get authorization to move to the next phase, whatever phase. whatever phase in the future that might be there, we'll also have the, the staffing and the logistical ability to do that. You know, en masse, but we are working towards that, both myself and K V H. And I know Skyline as well. Even though they haven't asked for our help yet, as well as North Shore Medical, they're, gonna be starting some of that. I just wanna make sure everybody understands there's, there's two factors there.
And I think we, you know, as we discussed this morning, I think we, we appreciate that, but I do know that, the, again, at the local level, I know either with volunteers or others, you know, we can rise to what we, like, I'm not qualified to do, but I am qualified to, direct traffic or take people's names or, and I know there's other folks that would step up and help with these, uh, shock clinics to, you know, cause we do, the trained folks, we want them, preserved to that thing that they can do, and not waste, like, I don't, I don't want nurses out directing traffic. That makes no sense as far as, let us dumb people do that. And, uh, you know, or calling and making appointments for people to come in to do, you know, that's something I, I, you know, I would, I could do that. And I know there's other folks.
Great, cause that was one of the things.
I already said that this morning. I said that this morning. I would, I would volunteer.
And we have, we have fifty people on the line that apparently care a lot about the county, cause they spend a lot of time, they might be willing to volunteer.
And I would say our county, the volunteer rate in our county is huge compared to other counties. So I don't, I don't personally see a problem.
And, and you know, board of health, emergency management, I mean, all you guys have to do is put out one Facebook post saying, we need people, to help us with the vaccinations and, and I'm sure you'll get a whole lot.
We'll probably end up getting too many, so when you do make the post, you, you calm it down, cause you'll get too many helpers.
So, what a terrible.
What is this calling thing you guys were kinda discussing quickly, if I may partake in?
Calling.
You said helping, making the calls or something?
Oh, no, I just need someone.
No, she wants someone to answer her phone. I was talking about, when, cause I'm assuming, you know, there's, folks are making appointments to come in, you know, and I said, you know, when we were reaching out to our, list of As. You know, cause I am curious about that. How has that worked as far as, I'm assuming, lots of As knew they were As and contacted their provider or whoever. And, but I think there was also some other, you know, going the other way where it's like, hey, we haven't heard from you. And you're, you're eligible and are, are you gonna take a vaccine or not? And, um, so I know that's gotta take staff time to do that from these, you know, either K V H or Skyline or whoever. I don't, I don't know.
We're getting pretty well inundated with calls. Uh, our call volume over the last two weeks has increased to a rate where, uh, my staff have asked if we can't find some additional help to cover that, just, cause everybody wants to get on the list. There is no list. I wanna make that very clear. Uh, we're not scheduling appointments. Initially, we just said, if you called and you said, hey, I want the vaccine, and I said, you know, what's your age and, was that, and you're like, well, I'm over seventy, and I said, you know what, we'll call you when we're ready. However, uh, that got out of hand really fast. Um, so now if you're not a healthcare worker, uh, we're not scheduling people, as of now. So, we're trying to get people to not call about scheduling, um, and just keep an eye on our Facebook and social media so that when they see that it's in their category, that then we'll help people make appointments when they, you know, qualify under the next phase.
Yeah, I need to point out that that's specific to the health department, cause K V H is making appointments, currently on Mondays and Wednesdays at least.
We're making appointments, but for phase one A, as is K V H. They are not making appointments for the following. So all of the hospitals, both hospitals, both health departments in North Shore are taking appointments for people that fall under one phase one A and the tier two, which is, anyone that works in a healthcare setting.
How, how many of the shots do you think we've given our?
In our health department? Oh, I don't know. Probably, what did you last week? Pretty fifty.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about how we're doing in terms of testing? Cause I see that, the testing percentage is something that's on, that's on one of these requirements. Are we testing, more people this week than last week? Where is that going? Because, you could test a whole bunch of people and you could bring your number down, or you can only test the sick people. So, how are we doing?
Uh, we don't do testing, so I can't speak specifically to numbers as far as, you know, K V H, Skyline and North Shore are doing testing. And I, I don't have, I don't have their numbers just off the top of.
No, you could. You could extrapolate it though from those weekly.
Yeah, it's on the COVID.
That we get the, the totals. You could kinda go back and look and see, is it ramping up or down, or what are we?
Yeah, I tried to figure it out, uh, where the, the purse per hundred were going. But, but then there's dropping off and, and there was too many variables to, to get it, but.
And that's why, so for those numbers, we just look at the states because they, have a better, they get, so they get all the negatives. Like, even if it's a negative, it still goes to the state. So if they got tested in, I don't know where, Kansas, and they had a Goldendale address, it's still gonna go to Washington State, but I would never know that they got tested, cause it's negative. Um, so we just, that, um, is supposed to come to us. It doesn't always, there's delays in getting them from other counties. That's been a challenge lately, so.
We'll have an update on where we're at on Thursday for the V O H. We'll, we'll know those numbers. I can wait.
But, um, they're on the state website. Oh, I'm so sorry. They're on the, they're on the state dashboard.
No, 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 I mean, technically I need a permission from the chair, so I'm just trying to be, you know, but it's kinda funny. Anyway. Have to try to remember my question now. Can we kinda go off topic? Do you know if anybody has used, last time we actually used the trailers at the fairground?
Yeah, there's someone there right now.
There's somebody there who did, right up. And how many do we still have up there?
Three.
Three and three. I thought we were down to two.
We're about to be.
And, and the price or?
It was in there.
That seven hundred thousand that we had that got extended, are you still using that money to pay for those trailers?
No, cause they were using the Department of Commerce grant that supported them.
Okay, and we still.
So this, for the people out there, this is not coming out of our, our taxpayer funds ourselves. It's just like our other taxpayer funds, COVID funds.
It's totally taxpayer, but not from those counties, that's for sure. So, yes, we still use those.
Okay, anybody, yeah, I wanna be, what do you need from us right now? More than what you have other than beating the bushes and.
That's mostly what I need.
Shaking my fist. I'm, I'm just calm down.
That, that's honestly really, what I need from you all is the fist shaking.
We can do that.
Okay, great. I'm excited.
Jeff, anything you wanna add?
Not on this subject. I, you've can, supported me all along, just continued support for emergency operations center activities and staffing. And, yeah, as far as vaccines and the, the new phase metrics, nothing on the health side, just to state that my reading of the roadmap for activities phases, does not indicate that we as a county government, anything has changed for us. That is all the same guidance and it specifically says in the, proclamation that any activity is not specifically addressed in the new plan are subject to the, previously issued guidance. Um, so it's my, uh, assessment that as far as how we, uh, act for our employees, you know, public health benefits, how we conduct ourselves related to COVID precautions hasn't changed because of this new plan and it won't change in phase one or two. But how we serve our, um, public, our citizens and residents of Clickedad County, through county government, I think there is some latitude, as we heard in the last, uh, discussion with the assessor. We still have some latitude in that, you know, how we serve the public while continuing to do it, based on those health guidelines, taking the proper precautions.
Anything else before we move on?
I'm, I'm good. I mean, you know.
She's wondering why she took the job you offered her.
I, I do that sometimes, yes.
That's okay, so do we. About myself, not you. I was like, no, I, I never.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Holy smoke. How did we get, I, I thought we were good.
How did we get there? You got fired up.
Yeah, I did. Sorry. Okay, um, yeah, Mr. Treasurer, are you, oh, he's outside.
He was not here for about twenty minutes.
And then he came up and came down with all the fist shaking and.
Was he not online watching it too?
Well, he was, he was.
I'm not sure I got the best seat in this whole program. He could feel us winding down, so he kinda come to.
I came down about, oh, a couple minutes ago and I thought I'll go over there and kinda wait till you guys are, like, oh, it went a little longer.
You know the problem we're gonna have though, it's on Tuesdays. It seems like every elected official is on this thing, so I don't know what they're getting.
Well, I think most of them just have it on in the background. They're not necessarily watching.
Not my problem. What's that? Not my monkeys, not my circus. Okay, welcome, or good, good morning or good afternoon commissioners. I can't even keep track of what time it is. Um, so I'm here for my, uh, post or every other week, um, update, I guess. So we have been meeting the finance committee, uh, about March, got together as we were trying to get through the COVID thing and we got on a pretty regular schedule. Um, and so I have been updating the board every other two, well, the following Tuesday after our meetings. And so this is our standard meeting. Um, and I go through and I give an update of the items that were in the meeting and then anything else that's in the treasurer's office and we go from there. Oops, sorry, Jeff.
We're trying to model.
No, I know, no, I gotta be careful, cause I can't see so much out of my glasses then. So if I start peering off, then they can't see. So I forgot my glasses today, so I can't see anything. A little bit of background, um, before I get too far into the report, just to let, you know, I, we have two new commissioners and, and I, I know you guys are well versed in different county pieces. In the treasurer's office, we, I did count them, cause I was just curious this morning. Um, there's about fifty different county funds that we manage, um, investments and cash for. There's about fifty different districts that we are the treasurer for that are separate from those that are, um, cemetery districts, hospital districts, port, the public district in the county, that we do, um, that we do, um, cash and investments for. So, so we, we, we service a wide variety of folks out there. Um, the finance committee have, is, uh, uh, established under the R C Ws of the state of Washington. Up until March, we had traditionally met quarterly. Um, and sometimes maybe more if we felt there was a need with the board chairman as, as needed. Um, and in March, we had kinda got to meeting and trying to figure out in case where, where this was headed. Again, back then, there were so many new things we didn't know. Um, and so we met, it was, it's a, the committee, the finance committee is the treasurer, is the chairman, the, uh, elected auditor is the, um, is on the committee and the board chairman is on the committee. Um, and, uh, it's basically a great, for us to be able to have a discussion about different, so that if things come up, we get the auditor's perspective of different things, the treasurer's perspective, and then the board's, perspective on different pieces. Um, so it's kinda the, the three legs of the triad, so to speak, or the financial pieces of where they're at. This last meeting, we, uh, went over a couple things. One thing we did do is we reviewed the schedule, um, whether we wanted to continue meeting with the new representative of the board and the new board. Uh, whether we wanted to continue meeting on the second, fourth Friday of each month. Um, we agreed that we thought that was a good idea. Um, we feel that there is some good discussion going on, on just day-to-day kinda things within the county or different folks. The auditor does service a lot of the districts we serve for different pieces to doing payrolls and A P's, so, um, so we felt that that was good to continue going, so we will continue to do that. Uh, we reviewed what we call the parking lot items from the previous year. So last year we had, um, when things would come up, if we, if it wasn't something that we got too far into, we'd maybe kinda stick it over. We went through that list and kinda saw what was out there. One of the things that's on the parking lot that we are going to talk about at our next meeting is the finance subcommittee that we use, through the COVID funding to try to kinda manage getting all the funding back from the state. Um, we discussed, uh, there are, and I'm gonna give this, I have been taking things to the finance committee as, to kinda get, um, their thoughts on. We talked about the two resolutions that are in the back that I'm gonna talk about at further length, about for our tax title sale. Rob asked for some time and he wanted to kinda run by Brenda and myself and the board, uh, before he brings it to the board for other pieces, uh, to talk about the schedule of the budget for twenty twenty-one. He would like to try to kinda get it a little earlier and so he kinda wanted to see, and if there was things he needed to kinda do before we got there. So we had a discussion about that. I think we all were in agreement that we thought that was a good idea. Krista, who was here earlier this afternoon, was hoping, and she mentioned the, the November thirtieth and trying to back things up. As the treasurer, a side note, um, we by statute should get the levies, I think the fifteenth of January. Um, so then we'll work on doing the tax assessments and everything. So, we're eagerly awaiting for our time to move on. Um, so we talked about that, so Rob will be working on that. Um, let's see. We, I brought the draft reports from cash flow to the group, um, and we had a discussion on that. I'll bring that up further down. Um, the auditor had brought up that we did a Kianta upgrade that has been really challenging. Um, and we didn't really go into a whole lot of details, other than it, she's had some trouble getting the payroll things working. Um, the system has kinda had some clunks, but she, she did bring up that everybody's been working really hard trying to get the pieces going, but that we're having some problems with our, uh, financial system. And, um, Commissioner Soder asked that we update some numbers related to, uh, top ten taxpayers, what it technically is, um, but wind farm, uh, revenues or, top ten taxpayer revenue. So we can look at revenues over, I think we put it together here about two years ago. And so update that, so it has all the information on it. Um, we set the next meeting for the twenty-second. And, um, that's pretty much about what happened at the finance committee. I guess at this point in time, I've always, if you have other things that I didn't get in my notes, which I can sometimes talk and forget to write things down, so is there anything?
Greg, this is great information. Can you email this?
No, that's fine. Um, so the other thing is, I did run our collections through the end of December. Um, we are collect, we collected about ninety-eight point one percent of the twenty twenty taxes, so, um, I'm pretty happy about that. I would have not thought that that would have been where we would be sitting in March when we started down this, um, this process, so, now we're on to a new year.
How many people ended up using the, um, new program?
I wanna say like twenty-four.
And were they happy with it?
Um, they were. A lot of people were, you know, it, we have this with a lot of our tax, so we have offered payment plans since I've been there for taxes. We traditionally have always done it for preview, prior year, um, taxes. But i- i- they kinda get there and realize, oh, I gotta stay current and I don't, you know, they kinda have other challenges, so, um, they were happy with it. Uh, for the most part, I think, you know, we, we got a good take rate. I think it's just more of, everything happens so fast. By the time that was happening in March and we got all the way through in April, we're trying to get things, brought out to the public. It, it was just a lot to go on, but, but I would say we got, we got good feedback and.
Were any of them businesses?
Uh, we, yes, I wanna say, uh, oh, most all of them, I think were businesses or, or folks that, you know, were, were on the business program. And we even had a couple that had, um, missed the deadline and so we helped them get going and, you know, uh, cause we had said we wanted to put them on there right on April. But I will say one thing that we did do when our payment plan and back to that, we, that payment plan we did for the whole year. There were other counties out there that tried to deal with each piece independently. And I think because they thought, oh, we're gonna be done by, you know, June. Um, so I think that was a little bit of good, on our part, little, foresight, that we got them all taking. So once they got on that paint plan, they were headed down the path. And we got them, which I think is part of the reason why we have such a good, uh, payment rate at the end of the year, because, we were able to get folks going and headed down the right direction and get them set up for success in the beginning, rather than getting to the end and go, oh, now we got a problem. You know what I'm saying?
Dan, do you know what, what he's talking about with that?
Let's just say part of that, maybe even pushing the most of that, but not all of that.
So, so what, what he did is, uh, back in April, he moved real fast, or March, moved real fast and created a payment plan. Moved real fast and created a payment plan for all these businesses that were suddenly cash strapped to the extreme.
Right. Could not, I could pay all of their taxes.
And it's one of those things that, that you did that was absolutely amazing that didn't get enough. Kudos to you. That really.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, I think that it was one of those things, I think, like everything, you'd like to go back and do it over because I think we were trying to work so fast. But, but we, and one of the things that we did is we tried to layer it. So, you know, in the beginning, it was like a ten percent, a ten percent, then twenty percent, twenty percent to get them ramped up on that.
Is there, I mean, you mentioned how many people took advantage of that. Do you have any kind of an idea on breakdowns? In Commissioner districts or something?
No.
I don't know that I heard anybody over here. Doesn't mean anything that I didn't hear of anybody over here using it, but I just think we have a different business clientele over here.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't really look at it as far as where, what geographic location or different areas. I just was looking at it as trying to keep our collection rate as high as possible. But yeah, I could look into that.
No, no, you don't know what I'm talking about. Don't waste time.
No, I don't. I don't. Not aware of that. Reeds, one thing that we talked about, and I want to apprise you guys of, and I brought this to other meetings. And I hadn't looked at it last week. I've said, you know, gosh, we're, we're busy. We're, our office is really busy. I mean, yes, we're, we're close to the public, but we're processing as much information. And actually, I should say this, we were a person down. We did bring a new person onboard on January fourth. So we're fully staffed, by the way. So we're pretty happy about that. Working on training now, but it just seems like we've been really busy. While I went back and looked at the numbers. I had said that September, we had our most REETS we'd ever processed, like since I've been Treasurer in 2015 and keeping track of it, that I could go back. I didn't go way, way back, but just the numbers I had put together. We had had the most we'd processed was a hundred and forty eight in one month. And a month is not a calendar month. It's a thirty day period based upon how we report to Department of Revenue, but it's equivalent to a month. And so we hit a hundred and sixty two and we'd only hit one forty eight, I think, once before that. And it usually, we had been in the sixties and seventies and maybe eighties. And we hit that one sixty two number again in October. November, we dipped down to a hundred and thirty four. And in December, we finished the month at a hundred and eighty three. So we're processing more real estate transactions than ever before. I mean, the last, you know, four months have just been unprecedented. A lot of those, ninety, of the one eighty three, ninety seven of them were sales. The rest of them were maybe. Doing a train, you know, where there's a ten dollar fee. So you're not, which, the reason I bring that up is because it's not generating excise dollars into the capital fund and the communications fund. But those mon, those monies are up in 2020 or were up. So, so we are processing a lot of taxes. Or a lot of real estate transactions and, and we'll see if that continues into 2021.
We see, I mean, it's a, it's a companion number, but our. Number of building permits and stuff too, or still are.
Are they still? Yeah. So I mean, it's one of those where you're going, gosh, it seems like we're just cranking them out, you know, and they just come through and we, we've got a pretty good process. The Dropbox we have out front has been working and we do a lot of them remotely with firms. Most of them are through the two title companies of KCTC and Amerititle, but we do a handful through many different law firms and different title companies that are around. So. Yeah, it's just, it keeps, keeps going in it. I, I don't, you know, you go back and you're like, I don't remember that it was that busy, but it must have been. And so, yeah. Going through, yes, I will email the cash flow report. The cash flow report, I want to go through a couple of things with it. This was kind of started in March. When we were trying to figure out where we were going, when we weren't sure where the cash was gonna go, whether we were gonna have enough cash, where we were gonna be at in our different pieces. And we were trying to figure a way to try to come up with that. And there's some, just like anything, this has its pros and its cons, but I think there are some good information in here. One of the things that we will do in 2021, we need to go back and pull out investments. So there's a couple of funds that have investments. So if they look like they're over invested, if you go to the five oh two fund, I think. They, there's an investment categorized in that and, because the way we do our investments is it's a purchase and a disbursement.
He scared me first because I was looking.
Yeah.
Where's all the money?
No. And, and so there are investments. So we're gonna break the investments out. But we were trying to just kind of handle on some cash of our major, of our major funds specifically to the general fund. Because we have traditionally, I think, and, and this has been something that when Glenn was here, he kind of was the one who kind of kept track of that. And I want to say we would end the year at about ninety percent of expenses. Which would give us some extra cap room or some extra cash. That equated to cash, cash flow. And so that kind of gave us operating cash moving into the next year, but we weren't really sure where that was gonna go. And it, like I say, in March and April, we were like, okay, we couldn't tell whether they're going up or down. And so we kind of put this together and I, I'm gonna make some changes, but I think there's been some good information to come through it. One thing to note, this is specifically. Cash. This is not fund balance. There is a slight difference between fund balance and cash because we do accrual budgeting and we do cash and we have some pieces that go through. And I wasn't prepared today to go into a big, huge, long piece. That is a conversation. I think we need to have one of these days, but for right now. There is some discrepancies. The other thing too is that we, in the county funds, are going to have two open periods. So if you get an invoice that is from December twenty fifth, we still have two periods to be able to pay that into January that will go back against the budget for twenty twenty two or twenty twenty.
One is today. What do you, yeah, I was gonna say, what are you expecting? We're sitting there, you know, like at eighty eight percent. Are you thinking we're gonna hit with those two periods, ninety, ninety two percent?
I, I think we're gonna probably end up in the ninety percent area. Yeah. I think we're gonna be back to where we were. I think it's gonna equate. You know, I mean, the thing is, is that we're right, and that's what I was gonna say. We're, we're ending, the general fund's gonna be at about a hundred percent of revenue, which we thought we're gonna be. So we're gonna be, no. The key that I took away from these reports when I looked at them was we're not gonna start at a, we're not gonna start 2021 below where we thought we were gonna be at. We're gonna end up being. Okay, we're, we're ending up better, probably not significantly better, worse, no, not probably, just kind of where we thought we would be at. We, we were able to get ourselves back to where we were. Some of that's due to the COVID funds that came in, you know, that were reimbursed from the state. Some of it's through to lack of, you know, revenue maybe down, but like expenses are down, you know, no travel. Some of those are small dollars. Some of them equate. We still had, I mean, real estate it being up, that's, you know, pushing some of the funds up. And so, so there's a lot of pieces that were still moving. So I think the key is, when I look at the cash balances. It, I, I don't think anything looked. Alarming to where it's like, oh, my gosh, we're really in deep, you know, this fund's really in bad shape. I think we're gonna end up to where we can try to go with our twenty one budget and we can. Work from there. So, so those were the things. I don't, I, I, these are the listing of funds that I have put together. These are just some of the biggies. I, I have no. If people want to see another fund on here, if you guys go through and you want to add one, I'm good with that. These were just, I just put on the general fund. I used a couple of road and. ER and R funds, some senior services, communications, emergency management, public health and one twenty five. So. But that's just, there's no part to there. We then went into a breakdown on. The next, the fourth and fifth page or fourth, fifth, I didn't page number. But the, starting at page four, that's a breakdown by department in the general fund. So if we were curious where some of those, you know, where the ninety percent came from or where we were at. That was trying to go through there. We were using that kind of earlier to try to predict where we were gonna end the year at, trying to go, okay, we're a little lower. So that's. That's just a breakdown. So it, it, it comes through from there. And then the pages that I kind of find helpful are starting with the graphs. And again, these are, you know, we have fifty funds. So, you know, putting all of them together, we can do them digitally. That's something too. And so people want to see them. But, you know, if you look at the general fund, you know, as we start to go through, this is just data back to 2015 of how the general fund has, has. Has moved. It moves very trending. You know, you gotta remember, we're gonna get our taxes up in April because that's where we're collecting tax dollars. And it's up in October because that's where we're collecting tax dollars. And otherwise, we're kind of moving through. So it seems to kind of flow according to where it should be. I, Dave, I did try to change the blue line that was on there to purple.
I see that.
So.
We had two blues.
Yeah, we had two blues and it was.
They were like azure and.
Ocean blue.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of. So I was like, oh. But.
Sophisticated enough to know the.
It was hard to figure out which one was which. You're like, hey. So, you know, some of the funds, so I, I mean, these are just informations that, you know, where we are, if you look back at the, you know, the, the, the road fund, for example, is ending, you know, at, at a high. I mean, where we are, but I know Gordy's come in and talked about projects they have coming up and how they plan to use that. So. You know, those are, but, but those are things where we don't have anything that's diving off to the bottom and headed out.
Do you have anything?
But yes.
You're worried about that we need to be paying attention to on here? Because so far, what I'm seeing looks really good in terms of people staying within their budgets.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, the cash is, the cash is. I am, I am concerned a little bit with 2021 as we go through. And I think this is, I think the Board is aware of this too, is planning, you know, for where we see this going. I know we got our first landfill payment. So, you know, as the landfill goes, and that's a significant cash piece. We, the fourth quarter is actually a 2021 revenue because we don't receipt it in until January. So, you know, we're able to look at that and we're able to see and we're able to go back and look and figure out where pieces are at. So, you know, I think that's gonna be a tough hill to climb to get to the number that we have in the budget. But I think that there are some other things. I mean, we'll see how long the real estate piece goes. I mean, that's another up that we have. You know, I, you guys had a good discussion about where we're gonna go as a, on the society side, and, you know, whether things are gonna open up or not and how we're gonna go. So I think it's too early to tell, but I think it's, I think the tools that we developed in 2020 are gonna help us. Continue to move through. And I think being able to have the Finance Committee meet on a, on a basis and be able to look at these reports and get them to you guys. As we're going through and adapt to things that you guys have questions to and add to them. I think that's gonna help us make sure that we're successful in 2021.
So with regards to being at ninety percent or whatever, it looks here, you know, we've got health ran down to zero here.
Five hundred and ninety nine dollars, but it looks like zero.
So we had a discussion about that. So, so if you talk to that, like, like, health, health spent the money, but health also has a huge amount of money that they just didn't bill for.
Correct.
Right. And so if we've added the income in from there, what would that do to our cash flow on here? Because we're not, we didn't bill it out. We're not gonna get paid until this year, but it was for everything that was from last year.
Right. And, and, and from an accounting perspective, it really doesn't, I mean, we are a cash county, so we care what day the dollars come in the door. So as far as health goes, to that point, we, we have, they have a line of credit for seven hundred thousand dollars to the, to fund one twenty five. To be able to, because they have a grant, a corresponding grant, I guess, or however it would be. Aaron would be the perfect person to talk to. That, because they have these dollars, because they have some dollars.
Today, today.
She was leading, she was. I said, thanks for firing him up. She goes, oh, you're welcome. But, so because, because the grants are reimbursable. So you have to spend the money in order to get the money back. And so they don't have the cash, the operating cash flow. If you look at the Fund one thirty seven, which is health, the way health has traditionally, the cash has gone. Is they get funded in January or, well, actually get funded in January. This, this landfill payment that comes in, they get their allocation and they get their infusion. And then they just kind of go all the way down and then they come back up at the very end of the year. It's, it's in the grass. That's the one nice thing about that. I think this year was some staffing changes in different pieces. I don't think some of the normal grants we got back where we wanted to. But I also believe that there's some other pieces with the COVID where she had higher expenses. So I do know that she has gotten additional revenues. I do know that they are working on trying to have somebody come into that area and do an audit essentially. And I think that will be helpful. And so we'll keep track of that. I haven't seen any receipts recently, but, but yeah, she, we, we, that number, and we also didn't pull more money to put her back to where she needed to be. Because it is an interest-bearing line of credit. So we're pulling the money that she needs to keep herself above, to be able to pay herself back once she gets the reimbursement from, from the state. So I, I don't know the details of her reimbursements of where they're at. But I, I do know that she has a seven hundred thousand dollar line of credit that she's working on.
So in terms of that interest sharing, let me get, let me make sure I get this straight. She's drawing down and her, she's gonna have to pay the reserves back with interest.
Correct.
Using these grants. These grants are able to pay on the interest, I hope.
Yep.
And so, because otherwise, we would have that reserves invested somewhere, probably making little to nothing on it.
I was just gonna say, I'll be honest with you. I said, when I came into office, I think we were at nineteen basis points or seventeen or twenty. I don't remember. The number was small and fifteen. We made it up to where we were at two, two percent or two and a half, I think. And I think, I haven't looked at the new one, but I think we're down into this.
I said I was gonna ask her as little of that today.
I haven't looked at it today.
Kind of got excited when you started talking. I'm like, oh, he's gonna ask the same question.
No. So, so the, the thing is though, back to the interest, we can't provide interest-free loans to departments or to funds, even though it's all the county money. The Bars Manual states specifically, and there's a whole long section in there about, you know, Brendan and I have talked about this, the Auditor. That we can't provide interest-free loans. And so basically, you know, if we put it back in there. And the good news is, is that if the Health Department gets these funds back and those, that can pay the interest, which it will. That will go back into one twenty five, which is a fund where the Commissioners have the ability to designate as needed. And so when people come or there's other things, you guys, that puts it back into your coppers. And I think that the one positive from a, from a, I mean. Having been the Treasurer here for six years, I go to Treasurer's conferences and we don't have problems like other folks. I mean, I'm just gonna be really honest. We aren't doing, you know, I've listened to lots of conversations on road diversion. I don't need to know about road diversion.
I do road diversion.
Yeah, we do. I tell people that, they're like, you what? And I'm like, yeah. So, so I think the thing, what we don't want to do is we want to make sure that the funds are all becoming stable. And we're able to manage them with the monies needed and that the Board can use those monies. So if we do get the interest back, then that's available for you guys to do with it. So it is an interest bear, but I, again, I think the way the, the term sheet was written, I want to say it's a twelve-month average of the LGIP, which is gonna end up to be essentially not much.
So, so the interest we're charging her isn't more than the interest that we were gonna get from that in the first place.
Yep.
Well, that's too bad. We can't take that money and it makes sense.
Yep.
Don't you have an administrative fee?
Well, we, we've talked about changing it and we didn't change it. That's another thing that I, in my mind, I would like to bring back to the Finance Committee at some point is. You know, if we had to go to a bank, a bank's gonna charge us a higher number. And, and I personally think it's kind of, you know, if one fund does a really good job, you want everybody, I mean, you, I don't know, you, you want to try to balance everything together. It's all the same pot. So there's arguments on both sides. So it's a good discussion to have, but you know, if you have, we, we had to go to a bank and go to our bank, it's Columbia Bank, where we use Columbia and Amqua. But if we had to go to either one of them, I guarantee you, they'd be at least at two percent for a line of credit. So, but we, we haven't. We stuck with that. That's a, that's a method that was put in play before I was the Treasurer and we've kind of kept with it for consistency purposes.
So our six and a half emergency, six and a half million dollars in emergency dollars right there. How secure is our emergency reserves that we have invested?
Very.
They're very secure.
It's in the state investment pool.
That's all.
And I mean, there's no, there, there really isn't, but, and it's very liquid. And so, you know, that, that's also plays into your number. So, you know, there's things that I think at some point we need to look at, but I think right now stability is the number one thing. And I think that, I think it's, it's, we're in a good spot. And I, I think that we're, we're good. And I think that it's, 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 it's safe.
That's all I wanted to know. Do you know this?
No, go ahead. No, 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 no.
I don't want to get us.
I, I just wanted, I wasn't really gonna go through every graph. I figured you guys could read through them. And if you have questions, I'm available to answer.
Go through.
Yeah, you're like, I like this.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to record to show, when I showed that picture of what happened with health, I'm not coming down on Aaron at all on that, saying what happened here. I'm saying you've done a great job in the middle of COVID and you've got our support.
No, I think, I think she, I think, and I think it's worked out and we are, that was set up as a draw. So we've only drawn, I think we've taken two draws. So we're at a hundred and some thousand. But it's not set up to just pay interest on the whole thing. We're only using the money as we need it and we're gonna pay it back. That's why that fund balance is the.
Whatever it needs to be to make sure.
Correct.
Every, every, all the bills got paid.
Yeah. Did you have a question?
I could do it. Well, actually, I guess I will. You may not have the answer too. It is more. It's back to budget related is we, you know, we got our, our first quarter payment, landfill payment, which was good.
Correct.
I mean, it was over, it was over.
I mean, it was over, it was over last year's pre covid, which was good, but as we all recognized. Our budget number that we put in there was a, was a. Was a tall ask, which it's, you know, it didn't need it, as far as that, it it exceeded what it could have been, which is good. I was trying to think, I was looking through stuff because I was trying to decide who do we short? In the budget, because the budget allocations are, you know, so much here, so much there. Well, the, you get to the, you run out of money before you get out of allocations. Do we have a set policy on that? Because I'm thinking we just decide, because in the third quarter, when the number came in.
We sure.
Way under the shortfall, we kind of just decided.
Well, we, I I what we did was, and I'll be honest, I I, when the money came in, we we went by cash flow and. We really looked at which funds needed the dollars and which funds didn't.
I know, and I'm not, I'm not saying we did anything wrong.
We had another, or in July, knowing we had October to kind of figure everything out. We don't, um, Rob and I are working, he and I um, kind of talked about that, like, okay, how does this work, I'm like, well, Glenn has a sheet that we've done in the past.
Right, that's what I had asked.
Yep, we we need to put this, so we'll be putting that together, and so that it'll have, it'll lay it out as to how that works and what that is. I think there's pretty clear pieces, I I don't know that there's, I think the general fund is one of the ones that kind of gets shortened at the very end.
Yeah.
Um, or one twenty five.
Uh, yeah, one or um, because I was looking, because I was thinking, well, how much of a shortfall do we have?
It's about two hundred, about about two hundred thousand.
That's what I was thinking, it's not a huge number, it's not, and again, that's the two hundred thousand. Of the goal that we knew we could meet, that we, if we could have, you know, we had planned on covering it out of the reserve.
Right.
You know, a planned, and then we, we said, no, it was easier to just leave it that way, we'll we'll deal with it.
Right.
Um, so it's actually performed pretty well, so who knows, maybe we'll, maybe we'll get there.
Right.
Um, that's a.
But but no, I, Rob and I are gonna work on putting that together and working collaboratively on getting that sheet together so we can have that, because that's. One of the pieces that goes through and listed out quarter by quarter of where the dollars are gonna go. Um, but traditionally, in what I've seen, it's either one twenty five doesn't get, because they have cash flow in there, so they've gotten their number reduced. It doesn't mean their number for the whole year goes away or changes, it just maybe moves it from the January payment to the April payment or however that would work. So.
But I do think that's something that once we kind of figure that out, the board needs to make that.
I I can't argue, I think that would be.
Decisions just kind of got made, and and I think that's telling that I didn't know. Because I wasn't the one, we were not the ones making the decision where it went or didn't go. No, it is, because it's, when I had talked to Rob yesterday, I was like, I can't find that we ever. Made it, you know, well, for one thing, it happens so rarely, you know, we've had in the past where we didn't meet one quarter's target for whatever reason. Maybe only by a few dollars, but the inverse was true too, is that we've had quarters where we, our revenue was more than we had budgeted for. Was the same thing, it just sort of went in, that's what was the unallocated, it just got kind of thrown in a, in a, in a pot.
Right.
An interest bearing pot.
Sure.
Till we could figure out what we were gonna do with it, but I think that is, that's something that I think. Uh, I think what we've done in the past was right, I mean, I think the decision, they made sense, I just think the board should be the one.
Oh, I agree, and I think there's some stuff that got funded in certain times that, when you look at the graphs of the cash of where things are at, I think. We could look at that and go, okay, well, maybe this one can slide over here and this could happen here, and that might help out some transfers and some other kinds of things that we have to do. So it helps the greater good out, instead of like, oh, gosh, we have this shortfall over here, well, we really, that's a self inflicted shortfall, because we could move. Some of their funding up a month and push this out or however it works, so, yeah, I I would agree, I think we need to put that together and we need to bring it back and. Yeah, I definitely.
You know, just like I know we had, you know, last year, the, the plan was the, the eight hundred and some thousand dollar shortfall. We were just gonna transfer it out of the emergency reserve, and then when everything all sorted out, we didn't do that, we didn't need to do a transfer. Because we ended up better off, partly because we were so underspent in our.
And I think that's what happened, and that's where those charts came from was, in looking at it, we had to look at, not only we were losing revenue, for example, let's say that we're, you know. Short on sales tax or something, but then again.
Short too, then.
Right, exactly, and it was very interesting as the treasures, we, you know, we kind of have a group that we've talked to, and different counties were experiencing. Some counties were experiencing record high sales tax, because people couldn't go to the other counties to do their shopping, so they're doing their shopping locally.
Yeah.
And Amazon's having to pay the tax to where the delivery is, so some counties are like, you know, and and again, that's a, that's a east side, west side kind of thing, it happened more in the east side. So there were some really interesting things that happened that it's like, oh, wow, you know, because some people would be like, oh, we're down, and we're like, and other people were like, oh, we're way up, you know. So it was, it was definitely interesting, or how people travel, you know, when you get maybe up towards the Winanci area where some of those people are from another county crop. Come over, you know, just different, different, interesting things that came through, so we really tried to look at the revenue and the expenses and the difference. In order to try to figure out cash flow, and and I think we've done that, and I think we can revise the reports and kind of get to where we, where we wanna be. Any questions on that or anything on those pieces? No, no, you're fine, I do have one more piece on here. Um, the last four pages on there are the resolutions for tax title. Um, and there's a resolution for a surplus sheriff's sale, um, so we uh. Traditionally have done our uh, foreclosure sales, which is the only thing I've done since I've been here, in person, um, and we have a live auction. And I think we've done them most every year, we might have missed one year, but for the most part, we go through, we usually go through, our collection rates high. Um, and usually most all the properties that we get, when we get down, we have usually less than ten parcels that are there, it's usually bare land. Um, when I came in fifteen, I think we had a couple of properties, and I believe that they are down near the bridge area that were on a hill. That did, that there was a nuisance abatement on or some kind of piece, and they went tax title, so the property didn't sell. One of the things that we would like to do is go back, those properties that are tax titled are held by the treasurer in trust for the districts that are owed the taxes. So it's not county property, um, we did, uh, the county did, um, purchase one of the pieces of property that was tax titled. Happened to be where the new bridge was gonna go, and so essentially, the county just paid the fees of, as they bought it there. So then that made the districts whole, hospital districts and fire districts, and so then the county then took title and that, that property moved into the, to the name of the. Of the county, the other ones are actually, say, Clicktack County Tax Title or Tax Title Clicktack County, you know, however it works. We would like to go back out and put them out for bid again, or out for auction and try to run them through an auction, most of these have been out there for a while. Um, they would go out, um, it it does require the way the RCWs work, um, I have sent these resolutions to the PA. For just to review, because this is not something we do regularly, um, but we would need to, the the board would kind of approve. That the the the, that the minimum bid would be, and that's the minimum bid, what we have in here. And I'm bringing these to you today because I'm hoping to have discussion and then bring them for the consent agenda next week. If there's any questions or whatever, I can go back and work on those, but essentially, we would sell. Eight parcels that are tax title, um, some of them may sell, some of them may not, our hope is that in the future. We would be able to do a tax title, maybe if a property doesn't sell one year, the following year, we'd have our normal foreclosure auction and a tax title auction. They would have to be on the same day, but separate, advertised separately, and then we could just keep kind of rolling through these properties, because sometimes it just, something happens. Who knows, I will say, some of these properties are properties that had nuisance abatements, and this goes back to a commissioner. The a commission, a commission, the commissions um, challenge with, you know, we do have nuisance payments that we put on, and we put some of those things on. These have been so big, it's driven the, driven the property to where nobody wants to buy it, so then we are stuck with that as tax title, so. Um, so the one that says in the matter of sale of certain tax title properties, that's the one for the properties that are tax titled, they have. They sit in tax title, um, we would like to put them out, we will be using a company called Bid for Assets, we did, uh, that's where I started to go. We uh, worked with them to try to get a secure, an agreement, which we have, um, we have it, it would be an online auction, because we can't, we. We don't wanna put all the work in to say, oh, we're gonna have it on a final day, and then we, we can't, we, like you said, we we might be under the five people, we can, however. So we're gonna just do it online, um, lots of counties do this in the state of Washington, and lots of counties use bid for assets, it's a very common one. Um, so we're, that's the one resolution that I have, the other resolution is a parcel that was um. Acquired through seizure, I believe, by the sheriff's office, um, and it's surplus, they wanna sell it. They wanna put it into the jug investigation fund, that will go into there, so we would actually essentially have two auctions, we would have our tax title auction, and we would have a. Um, sheriff's auction or a surplus sale auction at the same time, under the same platform, um, and uh.
Is this the property right on the hill?
Yes, yes, there there's that one, and then the other thing is this other, some of the other properties on here are the ones, which I think we should maybe get the natural gas company. To um, but dial in, because it's now, now we all realize you can take out the natural gas. But anyway, so that's at the, that's there's, and there's a house on that as well, that we have had challenges with people, so. Uh, you know, we we just wanna put it out and get it, and and if nobody comes back, we still retain on the tax title, we still retain the, I mean, it's still tax title. Held in trust for the districts and we'll continue to do our thing, um, but we wanna go out and throw in that and see what we can get, we think we can get rid of most of these. Um, there's a couple of little small parcels. Next week on the.
The only question I have on that is, is are we positive that that land where that house sits? Wouldn't be needed for staging or anything for the new construction of the bridge? That's the only thing I think about, is is are we gonna get to that point where we're sitting and start?
That's a Gordy question, I mean, I know Gordy and I looked at all of the parcels that were there, um, and we uh. We, everything that went out into the river, because obviously there, we have parcels that are underwater out there, so all those, we, he, those were part of the purchase that he had. These ones are the ones on the other side of the road, I, I don't know, I.
Yeah, I think we had determined, because that that was, we kind of went through that exercise with. Probably work, because we said we wanted to hang on to anything that was. But the stuff north of the road, they felt like, no, that we could, we could divest of those.
Was um. Trying to think of the name, the grade road over there, is that property?
Yeah, that's.
That's the one thirty seven number?
No, that's the one in Dells, or that's one in Lyle. Oh, no, maybe it is.
Are these auctions gonna be live bid, or is it gonna be sealed bid?
Right.
That's the one in Lyle.
Yeah, that's the single one right here, and it's a, it says in the matter of sale. It was gotten in a seizure.
Right, so the one I'm thinking about is on dock grade, and I'm wondering if that's the one at the bottom of the first page, or have you guys held on to that?
The only parcel that we have held on to, that I I can bring a map to next week and bring in here, is the parcel that's on the. Um, south side of fourteen, that goes underneath or around where the bridge is, all of that, there might be a little. There might be a part that crosses the road, but I can't remember how those parcel lines work, but whatever was associated with that, we kept all of that.
Or it's just parcel numbers, it's kind of hard to remember.
No, it is, I can bring a map, I I.
No, you're fine, I just knew there was a five point five or a five acre on dock grade, and then there was another one right there close to a right off fourteen.
So.
Um, so I was just curious which one that was.
Yeah.
Where's the money go, like, we, the minimum bid is based on what's currently owed to those junior taxing districts, right, or whoever. The money above that, does that go into what?
That goes back, so here's, so in a um, in a foreclosure sale, when we're doing normal foreclosure, anything above and beyond. The bidded or the property that we are selling for, that, or the whoever owns it, we've taken over. Um, that money goes into a trust account, which was one of the accounts that I have in my budget, that um, we uh. Hold to for three years, and it's basically the money goes to the person who owned the, whoever was the title owner of, so they get any excess money.
Okay.
If they don't come and claim that, then that goes to the general, but ninety nine percent of the time, that gets claimed and they get their money. Um, the, when you do tax title, the the property, the way the RCWs write are. We go to the current year for the, so this will happen in twenty twenty one, we'll go to twenty twenty one for the levies that are in that TCA. And we distribute all the funds to the taxing districts according to the current year levy process. So we'll have a document, so there'll, money will go to the hospital district, like for white salmon area, it'll be the hospital districts. Um, which if it's in the city or not, and I don't know what the TCA is to or not.
Right, but if if there's only, say, fifteen hundred dollars on.
The total amount.
For a hundred and fifty.
The hundred and fifty gets divided and goes back to all those.
By that ratio of all.
The county is one of the.
Yeah, oh, yeah, road and fund one. Yeah.
And we're the beneficiary, because somebody's now paying property tax.
And, yeah, and we get it back on the tax roll, and it's not, we don't have people saying, oh, well, that house is, that's the big thing. That how people are, you know, in occupying the house and they're not supposed to, what are you gonna do about it, so this way here, it can get it to be somebody else's problem. And Bob has a name to go visit somebody about.
That's not Greg.
So the only thing that I do wanna bring up on the um, on the sheriff's one, is we have the assessed property. Or we have the minimum bid as the assessed value of the property. Um, in talking to Mr. Cannell, there's three approaches, one is to set no minimum bid, one is to set the assessed value, actually, I guess there's more. Um, one is to set the market price, and the other one is to. Kind of agree on something maybe in the middle of those, I guess, um, we have it set at the, at the assessed value. Um, you know, I know that we're wanting to maximize the dollars for that for Bob, I am going to go, this was kind of some stuff that we've gotten in research. So I was gonna go validate with Bob and kind of say, okay, this is where we're at, is there any, I mean, you know, assess that, I mean, basically. If we don't get a bid for that, we wouldn't be able to sell it for that, so there is some parts of that, um.
Is that, I I wasn't, I wasn't around to to know, I know it was a drug seizure, right?
I don't know if it was a cook.
Yeah, does that house need to be torn down?
We sell it as is, where is, uh, we, it's, it's the buyer, the buyer has to deal with whatever the, so I don't know the answer to that.
But if it's a livable house, it's gonna go for well over that, if it's the teardown, you're looking at the cost.
Have you seen this house?
I I don't, I mean, I can know where it's at.
I know we get a lot of you.
It's got a great view, it's a great residential property, it's just very, very small.
So you're gonna, yeah, exactly, you're gonna be tearing it down, so you you subtract that price off of the land price, because these online auctions, everybody in the world looks at.
So let me understand, though, if we set the minimum.
At seventy nine.
And.
And we don't get a bid.
Get seventy five, we can't accept it.
Right. So the question is, do we want to ratchet, do we want to set a minimum of nothing, or do we want to set a minimum i- i- of another? That's the, that's the kicker, and I I am gonna go visit with Bob now that we kind of have, because again, we've never done some, this is my first time of doing something like this. So, um, my first time of doing a tax title too, so it's kind of, everything takes longer, because we're trying to figure out, make sure we're up to speed. And our goal, by the way, on these is to have this, you know, like towards the end of February, uh, we would have to give the no proper notice time, but it's not like foreclosure. Where foreclosure, we have to go through all the steps put in the RCW to notify the folks of the different situations.
And we get it, and Bob gets a hundred percent of that.
That goes directly to the investigation fund.
So I think.
Not Bob personally.
No, yeah.
So my personal thought is, is as long as we're gonna do a good job marketing this, I put it at zero and let it, and watch the people pile in.
Our hope is to probably spend some money and put an app in the paper and do an ad on the radio to let folks know we're having both of these sales.
My opinion of the matter is the money's going to the Bob's fund and Bob's account, and I'm gonna do whichever way Bob wants me to do. Win or lose on that one, I don't want him mad at me because they chose the wrong way, they got less money, at least it's, it's his choice. To get less money if he ends up getting less money.
Or no money.
Or no money.
I also don't wanna hold that thing for. If it was cooked in and we're liable for people.
Right. Think of what we can get out.
Lee, were you raising your hand?
No, sorry, no, stretch, you're not.
Okay, anything else?
Um, the only other thing is, we're just watching the legislative process and kind of waiting to see, and you know, as as uh. It seems that it's gonna be very interesting, and we're hoping to end up with fees and penalties sustained, um, that's a large portion of our county's budget. Um, that's a large portion of our county's budget, and that's my thing is if, as commissioners, we got to work to. I think that's a treasure and commissioner, I have passion for it, but you guys are the ones that get the dollars in the general fund, so. Um, but other than that, no, I don't, I think we're good and I don't have any other questions, and if you guys have any questions for me, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Any more questions for the treasurer?
Thank you, Jake.
Thanks, Greg. Yep, thank you.
Hey, uh prosecuting attorney, I don't know, are you, are you still on?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any report right now.
Okay. Any questions for, for the prosecutor? That sound like it. Thanks for sticking on that long. I'm sure this is riveting television. Okay, well, we can go back, we need to pay the bills still.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion uh to pay the accounts payable in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifty-three. And the combined payroll in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents for a combined total of. One million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and five, eighty-nine, for the date ending January eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Do a motion in a second to pay the bills and the employees. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed. Um, I do have, actually, we could recess for a minute, because I got one fairly short thing.
I would give you a kiss on the forehead.
Okay, let's do that. Let's recess for five minutes. We're in, we're going to be in recess for five minutes. Personal break. Okay, are we ready? Okay, we are back in session. We are under board pending. Um, I did have one issue I had said I would bring up. I did get a call. I did, you may have both been approached as well. Uh, from the PUD, from um. Randy Myers, they were having their board meeting today and they were hoping. She was hoping that we would have a conversation about not. You know, because the, the issue over the COVID dollars is that, you know, was settled. Uh, last year, but they do want to run um, kind of a round two on their business. Yeah, forgiveness program somewhere, you know, and, and I had asked for, okay, what, what are we, what are you, what are you asking as far as?
Were they asking for state money or they asking?
No, it would, this would be our money.
And they're asking for money, they're not asking for our help.
They're not asking for our help, although they may ask for our help too, I don't know. Her ask was not, it would, would we consider. Uh, contributing towards that, they're looking at. Uh, because I'd asked for some, what are you asking for specifically, that there, that, that uh, program? If it's like what the first one was, was somewhere that um, they expended about sixty thousand dollars on that program. And they would expect kind of the same, probably something in that level. And I said I would bring it up with.
And this is for business relief, not personal people.
Not personal.
So this was, I helped Brandy set it up. What it was, was if you have a commercial-based business. They would waive your meter fee and they would cover fifty percent of your electrical expenses up to a thousand dollars per. And then if you're a home-based business, they would cover thirty percent of your electrical expenses up to a thousand dollars. And it was supposed to be for three months and it got extended to six months.
I, I remember the.
And, and it was really, we had a lot of signups, we had a lot of people that were interested.
That's where I'm going, is you're looking at sixty dollars and how many people?
Sixty thousand, and I think we had, we had about a hundred and something businesses that were signed up.
So you were.
Not everybody used the full thousand dollars. Um, you know, there were smaller home-based businesses that, you know, they, their electrical bill wasn't that high. When you take thirty percent of it for six months. And, and it went really well. Um, I'm assuming that uh, we are in the exact same state that we were then. Um, and for the PUD, what they had in order to make the whole thing work is, is they were going to use their own dollars. And then what happened was is BPA gave them some sort of a, a discount on one of their like small charges. That amounted to about sixty thousand dollars. So it didn't end up costing them anything out of their budget. It was something they were expecting to spend for something else.
Right, well, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Why are they asking us for money when you have your own?
Well, because I don't think that's the same case this time, is my assumption.
Right, and it may be something, and I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, if we were going to consider. Based on that information too, that they, that was basically a hundred percent reimbursed for them, that they wasn't out of their budget. This won't be.
This won't.
But it will be also, if we're helping, it's a hundred percent, we're not getting reimbursed either, it's ours. That maybe, you know, for me, the only thing I would consider is maybe we split this. You know, where it's, if there is, you know, if they're, if they're talking about the program costing sixty thousand. And if we were going to contribute, it's like, we'll match dollar for dollar for.
Need to be the minimum for me to even consider it.
So, the only, the other thing that um, I used it for, so we were running multiple business grants. Uh, I created that um, economic injury survey at the time. We were using all of that information coming in to try to work with our businesses by, you know. It was, it was good information we're gathering and we were using, using these checkpoints. If you want money, make sure you apply, you have to go through the, the survey, then I was able to piece it out, and I used to give the commissioners all the, the information. If we're going to invest, I would hope that, that we would manage it again, and then we would get an update, so we'd have a good, a good. Overall picture of where our business is currently at.
See, I guess that I, I would throw out another question. Of workload on the department that's. Do you want to throw that workload on your replacement who needs trained and?
It wouldn't be a replacement, it'd likely be Richard. And in terms of.
Dave's taking off from his stuff to help over here, you know more about the inner workings of that department. Do they want that workload thrown on them?
Uh, and I think that would be a good discussion to have. I mean, I probably, I'll, I'd be the one setting it up for him and everything again.
And I'm not saying we got, I, I had just committed when I talked to Brandy that I would bring the issue up. To, just to kind of gauge the.
I'm not a huge fan, but I could in, in time be talked into it.
Well, I think it's the. Yeah, we're talking about you. And then the other question would be, if we were going to do it, where's the money?
Right, and that's kind of where I'm looking at it, we're looking at.
Everything's got to be paid for.
And the other thing we can say is, is we'd be willing to do the vetting again, you're welcome.
That's where I'm at. Um, it's.
But uh, I think another good thing is, is uh, we could have, have Brandy send us the list of who they helped. And we look about it and we think about these businesses and do they need the help. Right now, they've got PPP version two going. Um, of the businesses that we put in for the working Washington three.
What'd you say to him? He's running over there.
He runs faster than he zooms.
We're giving you more work.
Uh, we've got the working Washington three that helped out some businesses, but only about half of them that were on our priority list. So, you know, there's a lot of businesses out there that, that are hurting real bad right now.
I, well, I, I, I fully understand that. Yeah, you also have everybody with their hand out and you can't just stop dropping money and everybody's.
Money, I mean, that's the, that's really the bottom.
Start having budget discussions here real soon.
Right.
Uh, which is that much less budget that we get to spend on our own project. Whether that's a, a food giveaway or a.
Last question is, is now that, now that he's here, we can ask him, what, what Heidi holds in money does he have that we could use for it?
Right, but it, it's still, you only have so much money in a year, and is this going to be your pet project? Versus, you know, someone like me, I would rather, if, if I had, say, a thirty thousand split amount of dollars. To throw at my pet project, it wouldn't be this. Um, so we have to pick our pet projects with the limited funds we have, and that's kind of one.
And the other thing about our pet projects, though, is just that most of them have to come out of a fund.
Right.
That.
Project, I'm just saying that we only have so much funding to go around, so.
Surprise.
No, I, I, I was listening on the. But I hung up and then you started talking about me and my ears are burning.
Run over here. Uh, I was just, I had um, committed, I had talked to Brandy Myers at the PUD last Friday, I think it was. And said I would, you know, they are going to run their business. Um, what was that called?
The rate.
The rate, we're never going to do their, you know, kind of two point O on that. They were looking if um. The ask was the county particip-, you know, would the county consider participating in it? And participating, I took the mean dollars.
Right.
Beyond that, because we never got into the, you know, helping out staff as far as the vetting, doing it. As we did in the first go around.
I, I'm, if they're going to continue, I, I suspect they will ask if we'd like to help. In the same way we did with the last round.
Right, so there's that question as far as staff time in a department that's down a person right now. And then the second part of the question that's not exactly relevant to you is that if we were going to participate, then those are dollars. We have to, we have to get the money from somewhere, and is that something we want to do?
I, I don't have it in my budget.
My first question is, is where are you in your department staffing, training? How bogged down are you to take on another project of this nature? If money magically fell out of the sky and landed on somebody's head.
I, well, I think Jake would be a little bit more for Commissioner Anderson. More familiar with, because you're actually the one that did it. I, my sense is that it wasn't. Once, once the program was set up, that it wasn't a significant workload to process those applications. And get the information over, assuming that we are going on the same criteria. Um, and use the same mechanism as we did before, that the list wouldn't be that heavy. In terms of providing that fund and support. I think we could, I think we can do that. Minister, if they're going to offer rate, rent, uh, utility rate relief for these small businesses, that, that would be a significant benefit to them. And we'd move around priorities in terms of what we needed to do to try to make that happen.
Hold on, I'm looking at PUD account numbers, one fifty-five to two sixty-one. So I'm looking at a hundred and ten businesses that. That just signed up specifically just for this program, and then we got all the information out there. I can show that most of these businesses are down seventy-five to ninety-nine percent in revenues. Um, some of them fifty, fifty-five.
I can relate.
Yeah, um, in terms of estimated loss, most of these are smaller businesses that are, you know. Twenty, ten to twenty, a couple of them fifty to a hundred thousand. Um, some of them even higher than that, that are still asking for.
What percentage of these are, are, you're looking at the screen and guessing are the mom and pop type versus the, we have ten employees type?
Um, I'm guessing. Let me just keep scrolling.
The key word of guess was.
Well, I mean, if you gave me ten minutes. You said, what are you thinking? I'm thinking that the vast majority of these are, oh, actually, there's a number here. How many employees do you have, huh? Um, one, two, three, four. I see five, six of them that have fifty to a hundred employees, other than ten.
Yeah, I don't think, see, that's kind of my concern is, yes, I want to give business relief to everybody, but. The people that have fifty to a hundred employees, a thousand dollars off their power bill, I mean.
So that was six, that was six out of a hundred and ten.
You're, yeah, I mean, Bill Gates, let's hand him a thousand dollars.
But pretty much all the rest of them are either only the business owners or one to three employees. So.
See, and that's, that's why my concern is I have no problem helping, but I don't want essentially corporate welfare.
Uh, so if we want to.
People are hurting and some are only mildly hurting. But I'm not in charge of the program, so I have to vote yay or nay on the whole program, maybe the program is. And, and that's where I'm torn.
Well, that might be worth having, staff having a discussion with the PUD and saying, this is what, what our commissioners, if we're given money. We have a seat at the table to say, this is what we want, where this last time, we weren't given any money, we were just helping out. And it was helping us because I have all this information to give you right now.
Which is awesome, because I don't have access to that information. When I do, it just takes.
So I, so I guess from a, you know, as far as the dollar piece of it, because the, the argument is being made. On the part of the PUD is that. Whereas the, the COVID, you know, reimbursement issue's been settled. I guess. Although this is sort of round two, is, because the argument is, since we received reimbursement for. More than we expected to be reimbursed for, that we were allowed to offset some. Uh, current expense, that that is, should, in a perfect world, free up some of that money to. Reallocate to a project such as this.
And I don't know, the dynamics of that, I, I.
No, I'm saying, that's, that's for the board to do, so that's what I'm saying.
It's a viable reason.
I mean, it is, I mean, when I look at, I mean, we ended up, when you look at our cash flow, I mean, we did end up in a better place than we had. Feared we would end, as far as our year end balances, partly because we did receive more reimbursement than we had. We had planned on doing. And so I guess that's the policy question, do we want to share some of that like we did earlier? Or, or not, but I also, the, the corporate welfare, I, I.
I mean, that's a harsh.
I know, that's a little harsh.
It's a very harsh term.
But I, but I think, but the.
But I think that gives everybody the understanding of my point. The person that lives on the hill in a four thousand square foot house, it has this giant bank account full of gold, may not need a thousand dollars. Where mom and pop that live in an apartment and can't open their little fabric store.
Right.
They're in a little need for a little more help. Uh, so that's my thing, I guess I would say I'm good for it as long as we have an equal match over there, that they're on the hook for, for the same. I don't mind our staff doing it if they have time to do it, make it sound like they do, and then I would like to vet. The list and for us to come up with some kind of criteria on, I don't know.
Maybe our money only goes to those.
Or something.
Right, and in terms of staff timing, we've got plenty to do, is, it, but this to me, it's, is a significant benefit.
I'm not going to tell the little mom and pop or the burrito stand where we had lunch today that, you know, they shouldn't get. A, a discount off their power bill if the county can help. I just want to make sure that we're funneling that to. The, the groups of the folks, as Dave would say, that, that really, 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 really need that help. And not just, oh, look, here's a bonus check.
Okay, so I'm pulling up.
There's a way to do that, you'll have my.
Okay, small business eligibility criteria include being in business for, as of January first, twenty twenty. With QuikDak County having between one and ten employees and having been impacted by the COVID nineteen crisis. Agricultural producers do not qualify for the program. The discount percentage is dependent on the type of business. Storefront businesses are eligible for a usage discount of fifty percent and a waiver of the monthly basic fee. Home-based businesses are eligible for a usage discount of thirty percent. Discounts will be applied to a business's active KPUD account. So those bigger businesses that put down their thing uh in the nonprofits, I filtered those out. These are just the applications, not what I actually.
Right, there was a broader questionnaire there trying to get information. I was a little surprised when you mentioned.
I qualified at that thirty percent of the home-based business. I never turned in an application for any of that stuff, but I got the the email, so I'm aware of them.
And and I've talked to businesses around town that that. Did not apply for any of the funding, that they weren't hurt with what their business.
Or is there hurt a little bit, but they're willing to give the funds to somebody. As opposed to you see the federal funds come out and you get Harvard University applying for a grant. Because mom and pop bakers can't can't get the grant and that's what I'm trying to shift it away from.
And so when you mentioned forty, that's somebody who's filled out the form, maybe the questionnaire, but they didn't get the grant because they wouldn't invest a ten.
But that, but I still got all their information from them.
Like I said, if if there was a way to set it up that we can, I guess I would say cap the top of it in a. Financial level of some way, I mean, open from just brainstorming. Um, that we make sure we're giving this down at the the make under a hundred thousand dollar a year companies. Um, you'd have my signature in New York, sir.
Um, do we want to direct staff to have that conversation to see if we want, if they're looking at changing those rules? I mean, the only difference. So I have in here, um, one of the questions, because you know, the form questions. Was, you know, I have how much? Are the average yearly salary range? Uh, when did your business disruption start? What's your estimated impact? Um, how much your estimated impact is in dollars, primary business association? I don't, there's things that I didn't want to ask because this is all public information. And so like things that you stay away from, like what's your salary? How much money, you know, what's your gross a year?
And that's what I'm saying, if there's some way that we can do that, whether you do it based off. Their salary or gross or how many employees, because obviously if you have ten employees versus one employee. Can kind of tell what you make there.
Which it did, it had it, that program had a what max of ten.
But.
And you could also look at like the last round of the working Washington grants was focused on those businesses that. Were forced to close during this later round. It it had a heavy focus on restaurants.
Right.
Gyms.
And I guess I hate naming names, uh, but I would much rather see ten. Mom and pop, you know, little burger joints or a a fabric store or a burrito taco wagon. Get it than a an institute kind of a thing. Yes, I feel bad for an institute. But they're going to survive this way more than mom and pop burrito job.
Right, and 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 the large, those larger companies, the institutes, et cetera. We didn't see any applications from them in any of our programs.
Okay, well, it sounds like we at least have some consensus on at least thinking about going forward. I guess, I guess I'm looking for a number. Two, and then we're gonna have to have a discussion about where's it coming from, because it is, you are correct. I mean, there's, there's only so much money. And um.
And this is only the second week of the year.
Exactly.
The first person with their hand out.
It is, it is. Um, I mean, I think I would be, because I think this is important. I think this that from an economic standpoint. Economic development standpoint, I think these businesses, and I think even we can't especially target it at the small. Businesses, you can get a lot of bang for your buck as far as I think you can help a lot of folks. Uh, I mean, I would be comfortable, I guess, throwing out the the half match as we said. You know, and they talked to the program, they were going to budget, they thought about the same, about sixty thousand dollars, so thirty thousand. We would match the P U D. Is that a place to at least start the conversation?
I think I, you mean, I was gonna say twenty five thousand matched for fifty. Um, there's businesses that are doing better right now that probably are going to apply.
That's a nice rounder number.
So wait, wait a minute, you're talking, you're donating, putting in twenty five for their fifty? Is that what you're saying? That's right, so he was saying thirty thirty.
Thirty for sixty, he's saying twenty five for fifty.
Got it, okay.
And then if it, and then if it gets filled up real quick, then you know.
Maybe we look.
We might be able to amend it a little bit if we, you know, but it depends. I haven't, we haven't done a recent survey to see where our businesses are. We know where our restaurants are, we know where our gyms are. We don't know where everybody else is anymore. I used to have a pretty good feel for where most people were.
I got a pretty good feel. At least in our neck of the woods. Uh, it is not looking pretty.
No. Well, the question still, what pot of dollars are we going to find it from?
Well, we don't actually have to decide that today.
Commissioner salaries.
Yeah.
Do you remember how many, how much the P U D gave gave out this last?
Pretty close to sixty grand.
Right, that's what that's what Randy told me, because that's was the what I asked.
So so maybe repopulated, what was it? It's number fifty thousand, so we'll we'll put in twenty five.
To me is like that one was sixty grand, but they got reimbursed, so they really didn't put out anything. I want to make sure they have a vested interest, just like we're gonna have a vested interest. They're not going to recoup the funds from somewhere else.
Just because now we're spending our own money now. We're not giving them money that we were getting from somewhere else.
So if they're gonna run out and and get a grant to redo their. Replace their funds, they can get one to do ours too. I want to make sure they have a vested interest in the program.
And they're welcome, welcome to put more money into it.
Should I talk to Brandy? It's the only comment, also look at the metrics and.
Right, they won't come up with twenty five as a match.
Because they were asking for two hundred or two fifty?
Two fifty.
See, there we go, ten percent. I like it, yeah.
That was their original ask back before.
Oh, right, what they wanted the covid dollars, right?
Okay, that was all my board pending.
Okay.
And we're always good for it. If we actually decide to fund it, we will. What's the first thing I have? I don't have it in my budget.
I had no intention to.
I don't like my 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 graph going down below the bottom.
We've always been good for it. We eventually. We will, that's up for us to figure out where we're gonna get it.
All right, I don't like that thought, but it's kind of hard to say no to that either.
I will touch base with Randy.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, have the businesses too. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other business?
Where were we?
He would just walked out the door, but there was the state parks up on there. So while while she's chasing him down out of the bathroom, um, I did my uh tour with the. With the airport board and got the big old packet and started reading that. Uh, but what I did hear from the chairman of the board, uh Commissioner Sodder served on that board practically since he came on. The commission and he had nothing but really good things to say and thank you for your use of service. You spent a lot of time and effort down there and it shows.
No, we made a lot, we made a lot of.
I can't, I mean, Dave, don't take this the wrong way, but they had a ten year plan. And they actually got almost everything done on their ten year plan. Good luck on your ten year.
Yeah, that was a little ambitious.
State Parks Acquisition.
Right. It wasn't on my scope. We sort of looked at it and isn't that what they came in here and talked to the board about a couple of years ago?
I'm trying to remember, because I know we were, because our our general policy is that we're opposed to. But I think we did, I don't know why we made an exception in this case, because they said that they came in to talk to us and that we were. We were okay with it. It's on the swale.
Down at the bottom of the hole.
Bottom of the hole.
And so.
A lot of times, you know.
There was a lot, I think the case they made was there was, it was kind of a uh kind of a junkie side. It was like almost like a. I.
Trash heap and you know, somebody was staying there, I think, but.
Right.
One of the things that that they did, Whitney, uh Dave's new hire, did some research into the the application and everything. One of the things that it was talking about. Was what they have planned for that property and they may have planned a little campground. They may have some other stuff planned down there. Uh, which there is only a few other places in this county I would rather not be in a fire. A wildfire started in that canyon. So that's something I think it was worthwhile to get in front of you guys to talk about too. Um, there, there's also a trestle that goes across Swale Creek that's on that property, so. Um, they now own the land around the trestle. It also goes up on the hill. We don't know if, I don't know if there's grazing rights. Or what's going on with that property. Um, there's a lot of questions, but um the. The thought of a campground right down there in that bottom of that uh hole kind of scares the heck out of me.
I'm I'm still not clear. I mean, I I took a quick look at the the letter and then I, and it was asking. You know, the consultation prior to a to an acquisition. But I, again, I thought this was another, the project number that was provided, the grant number was something that was. Last year, year before last and what, and it and and I thought the the grant. Stuff, information said that the deal with the land is closing.
Which is why I didn't understand why we were getting this now.
Yeah, I I, yeah, yeah, we haven't talked to them yet.
Why wouldn't, I would be curious, I'd like to find out, because if it's not, if this is the consultation process. That they normally go to before acquisition, that's something the board needs to have a conversation. But I kind of took it from that, that yeah, this they it closed like in December. So then are they consulting after or they said they had made some kind of contact back in twenty sixteen with the board? And I'm I'm trying to remember, there would have had to have been a really compelling reason for us to. Not oppose that acquisition, because our our general, I mean, because we generally sent letters saying we're opposed to acquisitions. Because it's it's taken it off the tax rules. There is no danger of development or. So why would, why would state parks enter like this parcel? It's a hundred seventeen acres. Why do you need to buy a hundred seventeen acres?
Right, a lot of times the the county is generally not in favor of more government.
Right.
And ownership, but when it gets to the point where it's willing buyer, willing seller.
Right, maybe that was the thing, yeah.
It might have been to that stage where it's okay, that you know, that's their property.
I'm looking at the project milestones and it looked like the acquisition closed twelve one of twenty twenty on that property.
So, yeah, maybe it was, maybe it was, we just said, you know. We're we're posed, but I mean, it just is a general thing, but it is willing buyer, willing seller.
Uh, and it looks like um they have planned for five thirty one to do. Um, demolition on whatever's down.
The stuff in there. Yeah, I see in the tax rules that improvements were not, there, I mean, they don't have hardly any value on it. So there can't be a whole improvement value of thirty six hundred dollars.
Right, I believe several years ago, we went down, we got some funding to do, remove some old railroad ties that had been stacked in there. That might be the same property. Operation with the Conservation District.
Well, I take, you know, find out what information you can.
Why are they, why are you sending a letter if this is? You gave us a grant number, is there more property in play now?
Right, it'd be nice to know that.
It would also be nice to know what they plan to do with all the upland property away from rail and creek.
I noticed that that letter was addressed to the planning commission.
That I didn't notice.
And I emailed the lady back and I told her, I go, my commission is not the legislative authority.
No.
So Mochi sent it, she forwarded it, so.
I'll touch base with her. I haven't talked to her yet. See, she understands what, why, why are they bringing this back up?
You know, after the. Okay. Okay, that's that's it, because I'm gonna miss reset and run down all. I think we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, or the the regular meeting until ten thirty on.
Oh, and adjourn the regular meeting at two ten thirty on January fourteenth, twenty twenty one for the scheduled workshops.
I will second that one.
You have a motion of second to adjourn until Thursday? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passed, we are adjourned.
Should we have said that? Motion should have been till eight because, or eight thirty, because we're gonna have another discussion? And if we want to make any.
No, 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 that's.
That's next.
That's the next, the following Thursday.
Oh, that's right, that's before the board to help.
Board to help.
Yeah, you caught me.
All blends together already.
Oh, the twenty twenty just blended together.
Yeah, I don't think I missed sign.
So when you press that button, Lee. Stop, we just got to make sure that.
Okay, stop recording?
Or just press in and see.
Just up here?
Uh, no, no, see, there's the N button. Yeah, and then.